City Council Meeting to Order. And before we move on to tonight's agenda items, I want to acknowledge that this is a remote meeting format. On March 6th, I issued an emergency proclamation declaring a civil emergency in the city due to the COVID-19 outbreak. On March 24th, the Governor issued Proclamation 20-28 relating to the COVID-19 emergency and open public meetings. The proclamation has been extended until termination of the state emergency or until repealed by the Governor or Legislature. Due to these proclamations, tonight's meeting will be held entirely remotely. The meeting will be recorded, streamed live, and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting or to make comments. For those members of the public who've called in this evening, welcome. At this point, we'll take a moment to take a roll call of the council members in attendance, so please stay here when I call your name. Councilmember De Michelle?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Thank you. Council President Hunt?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Martz?
Here.
Great. Deputy Council President Ray?
Here.
Thank you. And Councilmember Walsh?
Here.
Thank you. So the next item on our agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would ask if you could all keep your microphones muted, but please, you are welcome to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you could all mute now. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. The next item on the agenda this evening is special business, ID 0790-2020, Community Awards Recognition. Each year, the Greater Issaquah Chamber of Commerce holds its annual community awards, where we present, the city presents, a Hall of Fame winner. Because of the COVID-19 pandemic, the 2020 awards were put on hold, not once, but twice. And so like much of what we've all been doing this past year, the Chamber reinvented the annual event and held it virtually on January 28th. From Ruth Keys to Harvey Manning, the impressive list of Issaquah Hall of Fame inductees truly embodies the best of our community. Over the years and through their many contributions to Issaquah, members of the Hall of Fame have raised the bar with their inspiring examples of service, leadership, and civic-mindedness. I am proud to add another exceptional community member, David Wagner, to our Hall of Fame. David is a longtime resident of Issaquah, following 21 years of U.S. Army service. He is a Vietnam veteran and received a Purple Heart Medal for wounds received in combat. David is a consummate volunteer, always willing to step forward when there is a need. He has displayed outstanding leadership and initiative for veterans, seniors, and the environment. For example, Dave was instrumental in spearheading the effort to update the Veterans Memorial to include Issaquah sons killed in the Korean and Vietnam wars, and to change the name of Memorial Field to Veterans Memorial Field. He is also a 19-year master docent for the Friends of the Issaquah Salmon Hatchery and has taught thousands of children about the salmon lifecycle. In addition, Dave served with distinction on the Issaquah Cemetery Board for 12 years, eight of those serving as chair. David is also a tireless advocate for seniors and veterans. He has served four terms on the King County Veterans Advisory Board and was helpful in acquiring $97,000 from the King County Veterans and Human Services Levy to replace the windows and make other improvements to the Issaquah Senior Center. He is also a member of the VFW and is a Veterans Service Officer, volunteering to process claims and to provide transportation for vets to the VA hospital. From working with the Issaquah Press to publish its "Let's We Forget" series, to personally organizing Issaquah's memorial and Veterans Day ceremonies since 2005, David has always worked behind the scenes to promote civic-mindedness in our community. I'm going to give David an opportunity to address, and I'm hoping that he will address one of the other activities that he's been doing for veterans, the Honor Flight, which has been amazing. But before that, I just want to tell a little personal story of how David helped me out one day when I had been up at Swedish Hospital and had encountered a vet who had just been discharged and was so obviously homeless with nowhere to go. And I had called Dave and asked what I could do to help, and he told me to bring the gentleman down to the Senior Center to gather some information, to make sure he had coffee and something to eat. And Dave came by and met with the individual and found a way to help provide him with transportation to get him back home. And so I actually got to see Dave in action, and it was really cool. So Dave, there's so many stories like that. I just want to thank you for your decades and decades of service and give you the opportunity to say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor. So I remember that, Dave, when we took that vet in. Something that I got reminded about today, something that the council doesn't know and you don't know, in the city of Snoqualmie, we have now long-term leased our American Legion Building to Snoqualmie Valley Shelter Services for three years-
Wow.
-to house the homeless. And so what an honor it is to be a part of that and to watch that happen. And the only other thing I would like to counsel to know, I think you know it, every year for the last 12 years, I think, and Mayor, you were there one Saturday at the lake when we disposed of over 400 U.S. flags, and we teach the Boy Scouts how to properly dispose of those. I can tell you, after a day by the fire, I know exactly what a marshmallow feels like. Anyway, one last thing I would like to talk about is something that I never want our community to forget. You know how much of an advocate I am about the POW MIA flag? And that flag is extremely important to our VFW and American Legion because it represents all those wonderful soldiers, sailors, Marines, Air Force, that never came back home after their vigil in wartime. And little does our city know, in fact, I just found another name. So we have six, six MIA's missing in action, five from World War II, one from Vietnam, that left our wonderful little city and went away to serve and never got to come back home. I don't ever want us to forget that. So when you see that black and white flag flying before, below the American flag on any given day, and we fly it 10 times a year in this state, if it was up to me and I was king, we would fly it every day to let people know that we have not forgotten their family members and how important that is to our community. This is a real honor. But the biggest honor I've ever had in my life happened in 2018 when I went on an Honor Flight back to Washington, D.C. And by the way, we've flown over 1,400 veterans back, no cost to the veteran to see the monuments built and memorials built in their honor and visit Arlington. And in 2018, I was asked if I would lay a wreath at the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier. And I can tell you, I did, and I saluted, and I remembered our vets from the city of Issaquah. And something was in my eye because it kept tearing up. I don't know what it was, but please, let's not ever forget those six that left here, Issaquah, and never came back home. That's, that's the most important thing I could ever say to the council. Thank you for the time. Thank you for the honor. I'm truly humbled by this. But now it's time to get back to work. There's a lot of volunteering to do.
Dave, thank you so much. It was very fun to actually surprise you, which it was kind of hard to do in a virtual format, but you were genuinely surprised, and that made it all the more special. But I'm very, very proud to be the mayor who got to induct you into the Hall of Fame. So stay well, my friend. So in addition to the annual Hall of Fame Award, this city, this year, the city chose to honor three recipients who recognized a need in our community during the COVID-19 pandemic and answered the call for help. These recipients are the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank, the Downtown Issaquah Association, and Issaquah resident Michelle Anibo. These recipients were also recognized at the January 28th, 2021 event, and they will be featured in the city's social media platforms throughout this month. Very proud of the kindness, the generosity, and all the hard work that we see in our different community groups and individuals. So we're going to move now into the audience comments portion of our meeting, and for those of you who submitted the online form to make comments, your name will be called shortly. For those who have joined us tonight by phone and would like to make comments but did not sign up in advance, please press star 3 on your phone, and we will call the last two digits of your phone number when it's your turn to make comments. City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak this evening or indicated a desire to speak?
Thank you. Yes, we have several who have signed up. And again, if you are on the line and didn't have that opportunity, press star 3, and we'll reach you in the order after we're ready.
Thank you, City Clerk. I'm going to go through a couple of directions about public comments. So please ensure that you direct your comments to the whole council tonight and not to individuals. And while this is not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When you are recognized, unmute your microphone, state your name, address, and relationship to the city, speak clearly and pause frequently. Please limit your comments to five minutes, and re-mute your microphone when done. If you do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will still need to proceed, and you are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Citizen comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process, and the city takes these comments seriously, and we thank you for taking the time to address us. So City Clerk, can you please identify the first person speaking this evening?
Yes, I can. First on our list is Kathy McCory. I do not see Kathy's number listed. I will certainly keep my eye out for a new caller to call in. Next on the list is, excuse me, is Nathan Boessler or Bosler?
Bosler.
And I do not see Nathan on the line either. I will keep a lookout. Next on our line is Mary Lynch, and let me find a request to unmute on my end, and you may need to do so as well on your side. So just give me a moment here to find that setting. And Mary, you have the floor if you can. There you go.
Okay. This is Mary Lynch, and I reside at 2690 Northwest Oak Crest Drive, Issaquah, Washington. I want to also just say I'm glad Dave got the recognition tonight. He's done so much, and I've had the honor to know and work with him as a volunteer. That being said, I'd like to, I did send an email, which all of you should have gotten just probably 15, 20 minutes ago. But before I address that, I would like to ask that during the pandemic, it's been really hard to reach out and stay in touch with what is going on. And I've recently, you know, found out about several projects that have been happening that haven't been appearing in a timely fashion on the city's website, and it's very concerning to me because we've still got a lot of development going on, especially out on Newport Way. And I signed up for alerts and thinking that I would be getting them from the city and have not been getting them. And so I went back and just checked the city alerts page again and found out, like, for transportation, there isn't any way to get alerts on what's happening with the Transportation Board, nor is there any way to get alerts on what's happening with the Environmental Board. And I would hope that in the near future, we will have alerts there so we know when there's meetings and like the Transportation Board looking through the calendar, it looks like they may be having a special meeting. But I shouldn't have to, as a public, have to constantly go to the city website and comb through the project list, the calendar list, the individual meeting list to find out what meetings. If you sign up for alerts, I would hope that in the future, we can do a better job of communicating with people. That being said, the real issue I'm writing you is last spring or last summer, we had, Newport Way was completed out here for REVA, and when it was completed, we were very much concerned, and many of us from out here have been talking to the development staff as also Public Works about the fact that Newport Way was widened to the point that with the anti-aircraft creek culvert, that we no longer have a pedestrian access to the trailhead, which, number one, the city central area plan defined the parkway out here that was supposed to have sidewalks on both sides, complete streets says you're supposed to have sidewalks on both sides. Since the Development Commission meetings with REVA have been going on since 2016, we have been promised, the developer, or commissioned, Development Commissioners were promised by city staff that we would have a pathway to that. It might be gravel, which we said, all right, but we would have a safe access. We do not have one, nor have we got any temporary or long-term solution identified. And with COVID, we're getting more and more people to that trailhead, and it is just appalling the fact that people are coming and having to step out with their backs to the traffic to get to that trailhead, and we need a solution. That being said, I couldn't call in because I didn't know that I, since I didn't sign up last week, I didn't know that I could call in when you, during your study session, were reviewing complete streets. I am not at all comfortable that the Complete Streets program redo will prevent this from happening again, because we alerted Public Works, we were following development staff, and were assured by both groups that we would have a gravel pathway. What we ended up with is none, and currently have no solution from the city from either Development Services or from Public Works that will have any safe access. And many of you on the council weren't on the council in 2016 when we had the accident out here, or 15 when we had the accident out here. But we, for years prior to that, did not let that crosswalk there. During Development Commission meetings, during the Newport planning meetings, we all and KPMG agreed that the sidewalk, the crosswalk should be moved from Newport Way, or from Oak Crest down to the trailhead and there. They put it in when they, or when they redid the road, they put in where it's supposed to go. But development staff refused to put it in there, and they put the crosswalk back in on our Oak Crest, and we now have to cross a wider street closer to the curve from the west. And on top of this now, we have pedestrians that are walking with their back to traffic in a narrowed lane.
Mary, thank you for your comments. I'm going to give you a chance to wrap up, and thank you for sending the pictures along with your written email. Do you want to wrap up for the council?
I would gladly walk. I would like to see the Complete Streets use this as a project to show how this will not happen in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. City Clerk, who is up next to speak?
Thank you. Next, we have Corby. Let me unmute you on my end, and if you can do so on your side, I will keep my eye out. I will send another request to unmute. And Corby, if you are on the line and can hear me, you may need to unmute on your end. Give you another moment. I'll move on to our next caller. Oh, I see Corby. It looks like we might have sound. Yes, thank you. You have the floor for five minutes. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. And again, this is Corby Kessler. And Madam Mayor and councilmembers, I just wanted to let you know that as an employee of the Downtown Issaquah Association, or DIA, and a longtime resident and friend, I want to thank you for your service and work on behalf of our community. I know we all need positive feedback at this important time, so there's my cheerleading message for today. Also, many thanks for our community award. We're so honored to be part of this wonderful group of people, so thanks again. I'd also like to reaffirm DIA's commitment to working with you to further our common goals. We all want the same thing, to ensure our businesses thrive and our community and visitors continue to fall in love with our city every day. DIA spends every day with individual businesses, and we are their advocates and closest communicators. We've earned their respect, thankfully, and are so grateful to have that close relationship. Because of that, I just want to again offer to the city our expertise to your efforts. We can be an invaluable champion for you, so don't be afraid to reach out. I'm here for you, Kristina's here for you, anything you need. Our businesses count on all of us. So of course, collaboration's the most important, efficient, effective way to conduct business, so I just ask for your support in helping us put it into practice with every action involving our downtown. Finally, and perhaps most important, I'm speaking on behalf of AB 8128. I can't imagine waiting any longer for our businesses to get the help they need and deserve. They are frustrated, scared, and for good reason, so please help our businesses stay in business and bring their employees back to work. 250,000 is small, but it's an important lifeline for them. Any delay, I'm afraid, would have dire consequences for many. They're just struggling to survive, so thank you again for your consideration.
Corby, thank you for your comments. City Clerk, who's up next?
Yes, Ken Hughes, you have the floor. You have five minutes.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor and all the members of the city council. I really appreciate all the support from you guys, both presently and in the past when we weren't going through what we're going through now. It's always nice to see your faces out in the community, and it's much appreciated. I'm also calling in support of AB 8128, the Business Assistant Grants. We've been lucky to receive both government, city, and state grants to help us bridge this sort of, this terrible time we're going through, and I've been very thankful for it. It's truly with the help of the city and the DIA over the summer with some outdoor seating and the things that we were able to get, was truly the only reason that we have been able to continue to operate as we have. I forgot to mention that my name's Ken Hughes. I'm with Jack's Grill, L42 Cantina, both on Front Street, and Sunset Hill House in the Plaza, so I skipped over that part. But, so I wanted to thank you for all that support in the past and the things that we've gotten up to this point. As far as our current situation is, with the 25% indoor seating and obviously the weather being not very conducive for outdoor seating, we're losing money, and we'll continue to lose money until we can get into the summer, hopefully get a really nice outdoor seating section area for all of our restaurants, and hopefully some more increased indoor seating. But given the way things have been going and all the unknowns, that's really something that we are hoping for in order to bridge this until we can get through the pandemic. As far as the grants go, with all the tremendous uncertainty of the pandemic, I would ask that the council please expedite any grant money that's available. I do believe we'll survive. I'm probably one, I'm one of many, many business owners that's scraping and scrapping and doing what we can to keep our people employed, but there's just still so many unknowns. I am a hopeful person. I feel like things are going to get better, vaccines are going to get out, you know, summer weather's going to help, we're going to get past this, but it could also go a different direction. And with that being said, any money available, however small for the businesses out here, myself included, is literally helping us make decisions to keep people employed and stay open as long as we can until we get to the other side. So thank you very much for your service, all you guys' leadership and support. I love this town. Been here for a long time. I know we're going to be great in the future. I just wanted to call and weigh in and let you guys know that we're still struggling, but we're going to make it with all of everybody's help. So thank you.
Thank you, Ken. City Clerk, who else do we have on our list tonight?
Susan Bridges. Susan, I've sent a request to unmute, and if you can do that on your end. Give you a little bit of time there. I'll send another request.
Just a reminder, Susan, you may have to press star 3 on your own phone as well.
Or star 6, or unmuting.
Star 6.
And I'll make a note, I'll come back to Susan and see if we, oh, Susan, if, can you-
Hi.
Perfect. You've got the floor for five minutes.
Okay. Never done this before, but I just wanted to reach out. This is Susan Bridges, owner of Yummy Yogurt, 96 Front Street. And once again, I want to also thank everybody for all that you guys do, because I know that you guys have been working around the clock trying to, you know, help all the businesses. It's a tough time. I just wanted to just briefly tell you what we're going through. As, as we all know, Front Street's really quiet, and we are, we have not been so lucky to get the state help or the Issaquah. We weren't chosen out of the Lotto drawing for the Issaquah funding. We have gotten the PPP federal money, which was the only way that we were able to reopen after we had to close for a few months. And right now, just in running at less than half revenue for this time of year, we are very, very close to not being able to stay open. We're hoping that we can, the PPP will help us to go until, you know, customers return again, but just wanted to share and encourage, if there is a chance, that the city will release more grant money, just like the previous gentleman was saying, any little bit does help. So just want to thank you and thank you for all you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. City Clerk, who's next on our list?
Thank you. Brenda DeVore. I will send a request now, and if you can unmute on your end. Looks like we have you.
Yes. Greetings, Madam Mayor, Polly, and City Council. This is Brenda DeVore, and I represent the Issaquah Chamber of Commerce at 155 Northwest Gilman Boulevard. And we are addressing council tonight to request that additional grant money be considered and provided for our business community. Similar to Susan's comment, we hear from all of the businesses in Issaquah, and we've heard loud and clear from our businesses that they need additional support and assistance. You know, grants will equal jobs, and jobs will equal less need for rental assistance. Getting people off assistance should be the major focus, and that is done by stimulating the business economy. Without additional support, there will be more jobs lost and more small business owners closing their doors. We've already seen so many, and we don't want to see any more of our businesses going dark. And they will be joining the lines of those that need help. This is the exact opposite of what needs to be done to require or recover from the pandemic. So on behalf of the Issaquah business community, we thank you for continuing to support and for all that you've done, and just, you know, we just want to add encouragement to keep our businesses in mind with additional grant funding. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brenda. City Clerk, who's next on our list this evening?
Thank you. Rick and Riza. Let me find you. And I've sent a request for you to unmute on your end, Rick or Riza. And we'll give you a moment. You may need to press star 6.
Hello, everyone. It's Rick and Riza Reagan.
Received. Go ahead. You have got the floor for five minutes.
I appreciate it. And first off, thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council, and everyone on the call for giving us just a few minutes to voice our opinion as well. And, you know, I'll be rather short. I don't want to, you know, keep going over the same subjects that the other business owners have, but I would have to say that I agree. I'm hoping that the city will move quickly, although my little business has seen an increase in revenue. We're blessed to have the- We're blessed to have the outdoor seating. But talking with the other city council member, I mean, the other business members of the community, there are a lot, including ourselves, that are still hurting from 2020. It'll take a lot more than probably 2021 for us to get back up to a financial where we need to be. But just a reminder, and I know that Brenda said this as well, a reminder that grants, when pushed out to the business community, support the rentals and the hourly employees that are, that are depending on us for their way of life. And so I know that there's many who feel like rental assistance might be a good way to allocate that fund, but I think a better way that will help start our economy and keep everything moving is to supplement that fund into the business community and let us keep our employees working, which keeps our benefits going, and quite frankly, it's just good for overall morale of your team and the community. So, you know, Reese and I still feel blessed to have chosen Issaquah to be a place where we are building our business, and we just feel blessed with the support we've gotten from the City Council and the Downtown Issaquah Association. The other business owners in the community have been outstanding, but we just ask that you move quickly. Two thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand isn't a lot of money, but if divided out, it really could help all of us with our staffing and all the other expenses that have come along with the COVID. So that's really all I have. Reese and I say thank you to the community, and thank you to Madam Mayor and the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick, and thank you, Riza. City Clerk, who do we have next on our list tonight?
Last on my list is Claude from Vino Bella. Claude, if you're on the line and can unmute on your end, we'll give you a moment.
Hello.
Hi. Yes, we can. You've got the floor for five minutes, if you'd like.
Hi, my name is Claude Loomiswag, and I'm the owner of Vino Bella in Downtown Issaquah. And, you know, along with everybody else that's been talking tonight, you know, I feel the same way. I've been here for 15 years. You know, it's just been, it's been a great, great going, great, everything has been great for me down here in Issaquah. Met a lot of people, and this is a community, and unfortunately, we've gotten into this whole pandemic, and, you know, it's kind of like, what I feel is, this is not a choice. It's, it's, it's a mandate to us, so it kind of hurts to be told on what we do and what we can't do. Twenty-five percent is not a lot of, lot of business to be had. It's, it's, it helps. The tent, I'll be honest with you, I've been very grateful to the Downtown City of Issaquah, Downtown DIA. They've done a lot for us, you know, as far as like doing the streetery, along with the tents that are provided for us. All these things help, but again, you know, this extra money that comes in, you know, a lot of people could use that money right now, because twenty-five percent is not a lot, even though people have to-do orders and stuff, it still does not make up for any of the lost money that anybody has lost. I know that we have quite a few people in our downtown, in our downtown Issaquah that support us. Everybody has regulars, everybody, you know, wants to support our community. I hope that the downtown or the city of Issaquah can actually let this money go through a little bit faster to help everybody and to kind of, to kind of keep up with everything that's going on. It's not been easy for anybody, and nobody, everybody wants it to happen faster, and I'm hoping that you guys would actually realize that it's not like something that anybody wants to have for free. I think everybody wants to work. They don't want any additional money, you know, of like any extra money from anywhere. Everybody wants to work. The people that work for us and that we hire, we try to help them as well, too. So again, this money that's coming in is helping us achieve some of our goals, but also achieve some of their goals and making them pay their, I mean, some of the employees are like getting maybe once to two shifts a week, which is nowhere near where it was before. So therefore, if you guys can make it happen, I would say, you know, just, everybody's been doing so good for us that please don't give up on our Downtown Issaquah Association. You guys have been all great and supportive of everything that everybody's done. I've seen a whole lot of you guys downtown, you know, eating different places, and we all do it at different establishments to support each other, but I would hope that this money actually can come up from you guys and expedite it so that everybody can actually just like, it's, the amount of money, it's like, you know, for the last grant that we had for $10,000, $10,000, you know, it paid for two months with a rent. That's, you know, I'm very thankful for that, very thankful for the rent of the tent, but again, if you guys can help us out, I think it would be very good. And again, I'm very thankful for everything that this town has provided for me and I will be, and I just want to make it good for my people that work for me, and also make this town a good place for everybody else to come down and visit us again. So with that, I say thank you, Mary Lou, and thank you for the City Council, everybody on the City Council, and thank you for the Chamber of Commerce, and thank you for the DIA. I really appreciate you guys' help, and I believe that we can make it happen.
Thank you, Claude. City Clerk, do we have anyone else signed up to speak or anyone expressing an interest to speak?
We do not. I did want to provide an opportunity for caller whose phone number starts with 206 and ends with 14. If it's your intention to speak this evening under audience comments, you can press star three, and that will raise your hand, and I'll give you a moment if that's your intent. And I see none, but if you do have comments for the council, you can email them to citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk, and thank you to all those who joined our meeting this evening. It is awkward to do these live phone, and we're hoping to have a better system coming soon, but thank you for calling in. The majority of our callers tonight were calling in in support of Agenda Bill 8128, which is proposing additional $250,000 in grants for local businesses. We also heard from a resident who is concerned about some of the items that are associated with the project on Newport Way not being completed. So thank you all for coming in and sharing that with us this evening. Council President Hunt, did you have any email comments to summarize tonight, any of tonight's agenda topics?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yes. I have several emails, comments on multiple items that will be on our agenda this evening, and while we're doing virtual meetings, I'm summarizing those email comments. The first email comment touched on several items that are both on the consent agenda as well as on our regular meeting agenda, including on AB 8112, which is the first 2021 budget amendment urging us to screen and consider which items should be funded in light of our most recent updated city revenue forecast. On AB 8080, the 2021 docket of proposed comprehensive plan and zoning amendments, there were comments, and then additionally, we received one other email that referred to this item, and this person was concerned about a item that was a walk-on item at the Planning Policy Commission, and was concerned that there was not supportive information on that item at that meeting, and also not a way to make a public comment at that meeting. Regarding AB 8127, which is around the emergency housing, we received an email comment in support and appreciative of that funding. And then regarding AB 8128, we received, I believe it's six emails. One of the people who emailed us also spoke to, one of the people who emailed us also spoke directly to their comments, which were in support as a small business owner, and then additionally, we received one email in which the person urged us to focus our small business grants on the hospitality and the service industry, as those are particularly hard-hit industries in the pandemic. We received an email that suggested we give money in small business grants depending on the number of employees and scaling by number of employees. Received an email in broad support of small business grants, and then a email urging us to include nonprofit C4s and C6s in the next round of small business grant applications. And then lastly, we did receive a email opposed to the small business grant funding at this time on account of, that we do not have the future funding that's referenced in the bill actually secured at this time, and saying, did not seem wise to not have that money in hand. Then regarding AB 8129, which is the fit and fun outdoors, we received a comment by email on this, that it seemed reasonable, but also was concerns that the outdoor fitness equipment might not get practical use, and then also wanted to express concerns about the concerts on the green safety concerns. And that concludes the comments that we received by emails on agenda items this evening.
Thank you. So the next item of business on our agenda this evening is committee and regional reports, and I will start with Councilmember Holt.
Thank you, Madam Polly. Short report, actually, I have no report this evening. Sorry about that.
Very short report. Next is Councilmember DeMichelle.
Thank you, Madam Polly. This is Councilmember DeMichelle. This morning, I attended the Eastside Transportation Partnership Meeting. The groups representing the three suburban regions have been meeting together since last April, so together we received a service update from Sound Transit, and I'm abbreviating it for the most important items. The main one is that over the next 20 years, Sound Transit is projecting a $6 billion loss in revenue and a $12 billion increase costs, which results over the next 20 years in a $11.5 billion gap. Of course, they are working on realignment plans and focusing on increased revenues. Claudia Balducci, who's the Chair of Sound Transit, was on the Zoom call, and she commented that cost overruns have completely eclipsed the revenue reductions. These are due mostly to land acquisition costs, costs of materials and labor costs, which have continued to go up even in the midst of the pandemic and reduced revenues. So there will be a final report on cost overruns due in July. That is the same month that currently Sound Transit is scheduled to make some major decisions. She was cautious about whether that would actually happen in that timeframe. There will be a listening session in April, and we were all encouraged to participate. At that time, Sound Transit will be reaching out to all the communities and requesting input into their realignment plan, and it was just emphasized that it was really important for every community to be involved in those listening sessions. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichelle. Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you. I have a fairly short report as well, just noting that I will be attending the Chamber of Commerce Board meeting on Friday morning, where I'm sure I will hear more from businesses about all of the difficult times that they're having, and I will be sure to bring that information back to you afterward. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. Lodging Tax Advisory Committee will meet next Thursday, February 25th at 10:00 a.m. We do not have an agenda quite set yet. My other report is that Eastside Fire and Rescue's Board of Directors met last Thursday. It was primarily a lot of COVID-related updates, which I will brief everyone on now. Eastside Fire received 12,000 N95 masks that were counterfeit. Those were masks that they had received from King County. King County spent $2 million for a half a million masks, and as of last Thursday, 80% of those were determined to be counterfeit N95s. EFR luckily had not issued any of those to any employees, so there wasn't, weren't any compromise issues due to that. And EFR does not have a supply issue regarding masks as of now, and will be getting the real N95 masks soon. And it was also reported that the rapid testing before, before shifts is working quite well. This is the rapid testing, COVID testing, that they're doing before employees and firefighters actually come to work on their shifts. They get a quick test, and then they are allowed to work if it's negative. So one firefighter tested positive recently before a shift, was sent for the gold standard test, which was also positive, and then the firefighter was quarantined at home. And the reason this is so important is because that means that there were no other exposures to employees as a result of the testing, and that's great because it minimizes the exposure while also saves the agency money, keeps firefighters working, and employees from getting sick. And as of last Thursday, we heard during that meeting that the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine had been approved for emergency use, and it could be available as early as March, and had heard that they had a good supply of that. So that's some really good news. That's also a vaccine that only requires one, not two. Then unfortunately, the vaccination rate has trended downward in King County for the past three weeks due to supply issues. Eastside Fire's mobile vaccination team, which we've heard a lot about in our recent meetings, as of last Thursday, had given at least 100 doses so far. They're giving the Moderna vaccine. All the adult family homes in Eastside Fire and Rescue Service Area have received vaccinations, either to residents or staff, and they'll get second doses in about 28 days. Seattle Public, King County Public Health had just, as of last Thursday, authorized Eastside Fire to also vaccinate at adult congregate settings, so the vaccination team was to be at Eastridge House in Issaquah starting today or tomorrow. And just as a reminder, Eastside Fire's sole source of vaccines is Seattle King County Public Health, so Eastside Fire just is doing everything that it can with the supply that it gets. Now, the Snoqualmie Tribe gets its own vaccine supply, and of course, they're under different rules because they don't fall under the jurisdiction of King County or the state. They have their own tribal laws and rules, and Eastside Fire will be their vaccinators starting, I believe it was last Friday, and they are hoping that on February 20th, they will start a mass vaccination at the Snoqualmie Casino in one of the ballrooms there for tribe members, their families, and casino staff, and it's anticipated that 200 to 300 people will be vaccinated in all. Eastside Fire is the vaccinators, they just have to rely on other sources for the vaccine. They're also working, Eastside Fire is, to get a mass vaccination site going at Lake Samaa State Park. They're working on an agreement with state parks now, and there is planning to have 500 to 1,000 vaccines a day, depending on supply, of course, and they're hoping for it to be a six-month project that starts on March 1st. It's modeled after the drive-through sites in Kent and Auburn, but it's likely for Eastside residents only now, and they will use the state's vaccine phases. And of course, all that's subject to change based on supplies. The Chief Clerk and some of the board members praised Ben Lane, Andrew Stevens, Dana Shutter, and Glenn Huffman, and others for everything that they're doing regarding COVID, and many of their efforts have been adopted by other agency, other agencies, and so Eastside Fire Board and the agency is really proud of all the work they're doing, and we thank them. And Chief Clerk also praised the city of Issaquah for its vision and partnership. We also heard that FEMA is reimbursing vaccine operations possibly to 100%, possibly, hopefully is what we heard, to 100%. For last year's COVID-related costs, Eastside Fire's total was about $988,000, and totaled so far in 21, 2021, as of last Thursday, was $179,000. And the other business at the meeting was that North Bend Councilmember Alan Gottelf was reelected as Board Chair, and I was elected as Vice Chair for 2021, and that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Councilmember Mertz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Mertz. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee met last Wednesday, February 10th, from 7:00 till 9:00 p.m. No action was taken, but we had an initial feedback, I would say, on a proposed best starts for kids replacement levy. As currently envisioned, it would be, it would be substantially larger than the levy that it would be replacing, so I would say there was a robust conversation about that, and pretty confident that feedback made its way back to the county folks. Best starts for kids has been important, was important when it got put in four years ago, so getting it right- So getting it right, if there's going to be a replacement levy, and if it's going to pass in the community, there will be further conversations, I think, with municipalities just the way there was four years ago. So this conversation continues. Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board met on Thursday, February 4, and no actions basically were taken. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Mertz. Deputy Council President Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Chris Ray. The King County Growth Management Planning Council is scheduled to meet on February 24 at 4 o'clock in a virtual format. The meeting will review the comments on all of the draft chapters of the county planning policies and updates on growth targets. The specific agenda has not yet been set. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you. Council President Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The King Conservation District Advisory Committee met on February 9. King Conservation District is a natural resource assistance agency, and they do a lot of work throughout the county to improve stewardship of natural resources. They work with communities and with landowners on a variety of conservation issues. And they provide grants as well as technical assistance and implementation. At our meeting, one of the main topics was around the upcoming election. King Conservation District has a Board of Supervisors, and they do have an election. It is held at a different time than all of the other elections. And so it's very important to try to get the word out about this election. And they will be, for, I believe, the first time, sending out postcards to all people that are eligible to vote in the election, which is a good step on getting the word out. But I think because it's occurring at a different time than other elections, it is important that we use all of our communication channels to let people know that they can vote on the Board of Supervisors for this conservation district. And the election will be open for eligible voters starting on March 1, and it will close on March 23. And it is online, so you can vote online. There are other alternatives, and there's a lot more information on it on the website. For the most part, people do vote online. And then we also discussed potential future advocacy efforts around having this election coincide with other elections, which would be good for both visibility and would also be good for the costs associated with having a standalone election. Then one other topic of interest that we discussed at the meeting was they are undergoing a search for a new Executive Director. The Advisory Committee will be engaged in that process. And lastly, we heard about their ongoing fire-wise type fire preparedness work that they do with homeowners. And because I know this is a concern to many people in our community, if you go to the King Conservation District website, which is kcd, kingcd.org, you can learn more about that program. And they do work throughout the county to help homeowners prepare for fire or to avoid future wildfire. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Council President. Next item on the agenda this evening is the Mayor's Report. There will be an executive session this evening to discuss the sale of city real estate per RCW 42.30.110 per N1 per NC. And the item is expected to last 30 minutes. No action is anticipated in open session. I wanted to talk a little bit about our virtual council meetings and public participation. Beginning at the March 1 council meeting, the public will be able to join the virtual council meetings via their computer using a new WebEx meeting platform. The option will allow the public to see the council members and any presenting staff, as well as any presentations that are shared in real time. The public will also be able to turn on their cameras and making public comments. During meetings and making comments by phone will still continue to be an option. And the experience for council members and staff will be nearly identical to the current platform that you're working on. Some changes will need to be made to council members' WebEx accounts, and staff will be reaching out to schedule a short transition and test next week. The city will begin transitioning boards and commission meetings through the new WebEx platform in March and in April. For more information, including the meeting links and instructions, will be provided with the March 1 council agenda. I have some comments on the Issaquah Vaccine Partnership, but some of them may duplicate what Councilmember Goodman has already said, so bear with me. The Issaquah Vaccine Community Partnership met earlier today for our weekly coordination meeting. Eastside Fire and Rescue continues to receive limited vaccines from public health, Seattle and King County, to administer via a mobile unit for long-term care facilities, as well as low-income senior housing. There are limited vaccines available each week at local pharmacies. For example, about 100 doses were distributed at the Costco in Issaquah last week. The partnership is currently focusing on advocating for future vaccine allocations to this area at both the county and state level. King County Councilmember Kathy Lambert and/or her staff have attended our coordination meetings each of these last couple of weeks, and we plan to send a letter to King County Executive Dell Constantine soon. Earlier today, Simamish Mayor Karen Moran and I, along with our staff, met with a representative from the Governor's Office to further advocate. Our partnership is also preparing to set up a vehicular COVID-19 vaccination site in Issaquah. Eastside Fire and Rescue is working to set up logistics now, so that when vaccines are more readily available, we will be ready. We are also working on an agreement between the cities of Issaquah and Simamish, as well as Eastside Fire and Rescue, that defines roles, reimbursement, and more for both the mobile vaccination efforts, as well as the future mass vaccination sites. I've invited Eastside Fire and Rescue Chief Clark, Jeff Clark, to join us tonight and provide a short update on the work that his team is doing. Chief, do you have anything to add?
I do not have too much to add, but I will update Councilmember Goodman's numbers a little bit. Excellent job, Councilmember Goodman. I'm impressed how much attention and we're able to get all of that right. Two things from her update. We did today visit Eastridge, and last week, we were only getting an average of 30 vaccines a day. We did get 50 to deliver today, and we're hoping to keep seeing that number go up. And we were also successful at the tribe this weekend at a test run, and we will be vaccinating 300 people at the tribe this next weekend. So we're moving in the right direction, and I cannot thank the city of Issaquah enough for your leadership in putting this partnership together. This would not be happening without the vision of the city and getting the meeting together, hosting the meeting, and driving this to a successful conclusion. So let's keep up the great work, and thanks to everybody for the work they're putting in on this.
Thank you very much, Chief Clark. It's been great working in this collaboration. The next couple of items on our agenda this evening are informational updates. And we will start with ID 0805, Community Survey. And I'd like to invite the Assistant to the City Administrator, Autumn Monahan, to make a presentation.
Hi there. Can you hear me okay? Can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. Hi there, Mayor Polly and City Councilmembers. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Autumn Monahan. I'm the Assistant to the City Administrator, and I have managed our community survey project over the past several years. Jeremy Bertrand Hayneson is also here tonight to partner on this presentation, thanks to his work on performance measurement. So to start off, here is a graphic from our strategic plan on our annual process, which is a plan, do, check, and adjust cycle. Right now, we're in the work plan implementation phase for 2021. Next comes some performance evaluation and a community survey before we report out to the community, and then make any possible strategic plan adjustments ahead of next year's budget. We have conducted a community survey every other year since 2014. And previously, we hired National Research Center to conduct the survey and produce the reports that we use. Tonight, we're here to brief you on a change to that vendor. We're now going with ETC Institute. ETC has implemented community surveys for a variety of local government agencies and our neighbors, including Shoreline and Rose Island. And they're also used by many nationally recognized what works cities that use data and evidence to engage the public and improve their services, including Austin and Kansas City. This company is also an expert in survey research, and we're really excited to work with them on survey development this year. While we'll be making a change to vendors, there will still be a lot of consistency on our community survey. We plan to retain some key questions we've used in the past, which will help with a trends over time analysis. And we'll still also have data reported by both demographics and location. And key questions will be benchmarked with other communities, both at the local and national level. While not everyone will receive an invitation to take our formal survey, we'll also offer an online version for anyone to fill out and do a lot of outreach ahead of time, let people know that they can take it. And so this also expands our data pool even further. And next, I'll hand it over to Jeremy and talk a bit about the benefits of the transition to ETC.
Thank you, Autumn. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great. Good evening, Mayor Polly and members of the council. So as Autumn said, I'll now be talking about the new benefits of transitioning to ETC Institute. So in terms of flexibility on survey design and alignment with our performance measurement program, ETC encourages cities to design their surveys with residents and pertinent policy areas in mind. They have a standard template, but are very flexible in allowing cities to design their own questions with up to 35 questions, around 35 questions in the survey. So this flexibility will allow staff to align questions with our adaptive performance measures, such as including questions on commute type. And for testing the questions before launch, ETC pilot tests the survey questions with internal survey specialists and with a small sample of Issaquah residents to ensure that the survey quality is high and that respondents understand the meaning of questions. And then in terms of follow-up emails and phone calls, this is new from our previous community survey. After seven to 10 days after a mailed survey is sent out, ETC files up by phone and email to increase response rates. This also ensures that residents have multiple modes of response and that the city receives a representative sample of the community. And so ETC carries this out until we receive 600 responses, which is approximately a 4% margin of error. And then lastly, one other benefit, can we go to the next slide? One other benefit of transitioning to ETC is that they provide what they call an important satisfaction analysis, such as the one shown here from the city of Shoreline in 2018. And this analysis asks community members not only their satisfaction with varied city services, as we have in the past, but also their perception of importance for various policies and programs. So ETC then creates a matrix like the one we're showing here, which emphasizes in the lower right quadrant for programs or policies that residents believe are very important but have lower levels of satisfaction. And so these are areas that could benefit from increased investment. And based on this analysis, we have these different quadrants and can identify what are important areas for investment in the future. So that's our presentation today. So are there any questions?
Thank you, Jeremy. Thank you, Autumn. I'll leave the chat open for a second or two to see. There is no action being requested this evening from the council. This is just an informational presentation. And I'm not, oh, there we go. Deputy Council President Ray has a question.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. Two questions, really. You can take them either order. One, what was the catalyst for changing our survey provider? And when do we expect the survey to be fielded?
I can start with that. We hope to launch the survey in March and April, and then have a report out to you by May, so that we've got plenty of time to not only report out, but then make any tweaks to the strategic plan. And then that would really help inform the budget process moving forward. So that's our timeline right now as far as conducting the survey. And then the reason why we switched is we thought it was time just to see what else was out there. And so Jeremy and I did a lot of research on different firms that conduct community surveys, and we were impressed with the satisfaction and importance scale. I think that's a really important addition, as far as oftentimes we'll get the survey and then say, what's next? And so this really helps informs us what is not only important, but is, you know, has low satisfaction in our communities, so areas we can really make improvement. And then also, I'm really excited that we'll have other options for following up with folks on filling out their surveys. Before, with the National Research Center, it was just through mail. And so I'm excited that hopefully we'll reach a more diverse community base with these other outreach tools.
Thank you.
Deputy Council President Ray, do you have any other questions?
No, I'm good.
Well, I am not seeing any other in the chat. Jeremy and Autumn, thanks very much. Also, I'm just going to embarrass Jeremy and say congratulations. He's got a new position with King County, and he's leaving us really soon. And I've never actually got to sit in a room with him, but I'm so proud of him that he's going to his new position. And Jeremy, your position in King County has something to do with vaccinations, I understand, and data.
It does, yeah. Thank you, Mayor Polly. It's been a pleasure working at the city, and I'm also sad that we never got to meet in person. But yes, I'm really excited about the new opportunity and also very sad to leave the city.
Yeah, I think our desks literally would have been less than 40 feet apart if we were in the office. But anyway, we're very proud of you, and congratulations on that. Thank you very much, Autumn. Going to go to the next informational item, which is ID 0836, Central Park Pad Number Three Turf Replacement. And I'd like to invite Parks and Community Services Director Jeff Watling to make a presentation.
Mayor, thank you. Mayor Polly, good evening, council. I am sharing my screen. Are you able to see this?
Yes, we can.
Great.
It's showing up in, yeah, let's see. It's showing up with your next slide in series as well. I don't know if there's a different way to show that.
Is that one better now? Or is it still showing the?
Yeah, we still see your next slide and your notes if you have them.
Which I don't. Apologize.
Okay.
I'm seeing them both on my screen, so I'm sorry. If you don't mind, we'll go with this version.
Let's just go with it.
First time sharing on WebEx. The joy of every platform. Good evening, council. Thank you, Jeff Watling, Parks and Community Services Director, here to provide you a project update on a 2021 budgeted capital item, our turf replacement of Central Park Pad Three. Share with you the approach that we took, as well as the recommendation, a recommended action that we're preparing to bring back to you on March 1. Little bit of background on this project and on this facility. These synthetic turf fields were originally constructed and installed in 2008. The infill used was 100% chrome rubber for this project. Anticipated life cycle for synthetic turf projects like this are anywhere between eight and 15 years, depending on use. I think what we've seen with these two fields up at Central Park, we've seen very heavy use. The communities love them. And like inviting the entire community to your house, the carpet starts to get a little bit tired, which it has. So we've gotten 12 years of life out of this. We really are nearing the end of its useful life. Appreciate council's action on our recommendation of creating the turf replacement fund in 2018. With that implementation a couple of years ago, a portion of this project will be funded with that turf replacement fund. We knew with the adoption of that fund, and given the short amount of life of that fund, it would not fully fund this project, but proceeds from that fund are certainly contributing greatly. The fields themselves provide sports recreation for soccer, lacrosse, and football. So really, all your major rectangular sports are represented. As we reached out to the user groups, we certainly saw support for continuing with that initial programming, and that is what we are anticipating to do. So along with that project goal, we are also looking, as we consider replacement of the turf, as well as the infill system, we wanted to, and we recognized the value of being able to keep the field drainage and the base that's underneath the carpet, as is. One of the benefits when you do a turf replacement, it thus is not, doesn't replicate the entire cost of the project when you install it. The second bullet, though, was a real key one for us. Given where the industry is, as it explores alternative infill options, we really feel like this project was at a strategic moment where we were able to consider other infill options, whereas historically, chrome rubber was really the only option that existed. Enough advancements have happened, enough newer generations of alternative One of the benefits when you do a turf replacement, it thus is not, doesn't replicate the entire cost of the project when you install it. The second bullet, though, was a real key one for us. Given where the industry is, as it explores alternative infill options, we really feel like this project was at a strategic moment where we were able to consider other infill options, whereas historically, chrome rubber was really the only option that existed. Enough advancements have happened, enough newer generations of alternative infills. We're at a point that we wanted to do some exploration of those options. As we explored those options, though, we wanted to look at infill considerations that would not require additional watering or excessive additional maintenance. Some smaller elements to this project, we're replacing some damaged fencing and other, just life cycle maintenance, capital repairs, as we're doing the work with the turf. Another strong consideration as we explored turf and infill options were to work within the 2021 budget of $1.6 million. This is an aerial of the proposed lines configuration that we're proceeding with the project. I just wanted to share this real quickly to show as we reached out to user groups. We are sticking with this similar rectangular sport uses of soccer, lacrosse, as well as football practices. Through that feedback with the user groups, we've been able to provide some enhancements that we're going to have both men's and women's lacrosse lines on both fields. That wasn't the case prior, so that'll give some additional flexibility in use. We're also going to add some 10-yard, or some designations along all four sidelines, every 10 yards to really assist and aid in youth football practices that occur up at the facility. Lastly, as we explored infill options, we looked at three, it really came down to three options, that as we looked at these, we wanted to explore the options, as I said earlier, that fit within the available project budget. There are a number of options in the industry that would have required additional budget that we didn't want to consider at this time, and certainly recognized as the, as the industry continues to advance. And alternative infills, we'll be able to explore them maybe in, in future years or future replacements. But the three options we looked at for this installation are SBR rubber, which is a synthetic rubber. Forgive me, I have an acronym on this that I don't know, the scientific name. It's a pretty fancy polymer, but it's a synthetic rubber with a sand infill was one of the options we explored. The other option was utilizing a natural cork and sand combination infill. In that case, we would also look at adding a pad underneath the carpet, so much like you would put a pad in your carpet at home. It adds additional safety and cushioning and safety in falls. The third option we looked at for infill was a hybrid, looking at both natural cork, a combination of natural cork, synthetic rubber, and sand, that would also include a pad. Again, all of these options were within our available project budget. We worked with our consultants, and we then, as we explored these options, brought them before the park board on January 25th to have a conversation. As we've had discussions with our consultant, as we met with the mayor, our recommendation would be to proceed at this time with the natural cork, the 100% natural cork and sand infill option. As we expressed this, these options in detail with the park board, they unanimously, forgive me, supported this action at their January 25th meeting. Much like we did with synthetic turf purchase when we did Central Park Pad One in 2018, we would go through our co-op membership with KCDA. A few other items on the natural cork infill, as I said earlier, I, you know, the, the industry, this newer generation of cork really allows for much lower maintenance than some of the additional, the, the previous generations of cork provided. It also, I think, meets many of our environmental and sustainability goals as a city and as a community. Our next step in this project would be to request council authorization at your March first meeting and then proceed with procurement. Once we have the product procured, we would work with scheduling. We've already been in communication with all the user groups who use this field. We would obviously remain in very close communication with them as this project gets scheduled in 2021. So that's the end of the staff report. Certainly invite any questions or feedback you may have at this time. Thank you very much. Forgive me for my awkward presentation visual.
Thank you, Director Watling. Maybe just this one time. Deputy Council President Ray was quick on the draw, and SBR is styrene butadiene rubber. So thank you, Deputy Council President Ray.
Thank you.
I'll give, I'll give a few seconds to see if anybody signs up for additional questions, but it does look like this is coming back to council on March 1st. And at this time, I'm, yes, we do. We have a comment from Councilmember Hall.
Super quick one, Mayor Polly. This is Councilmember Hall. I just wanted to say thank you and everyone else who contributed to this. You very clearly did your homework, and I appreciate that. And as a former member of a user group of those fields, when I played high school soccer, I certainly appreciate all the outreach you did to the user groups too. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Let's go to Councilmember Mart for a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Not, not to be pedantic, I think that that pad was done in 2009, not 2008. Might want to double check the date because it was brand new when I started on council. And I was just looking it up, kind of trying to quickly double check, but pretty sure it was installed in the summer of 2009, not 2008. Not that that would influence our decisions going forward, but you know, history matters. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Mart. Seeing no further questions, I guess you're good, Director Watling. Thanks. We'll see you on March 1st.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda this evening is the consent calendar, which was distributed to council in advance. And if authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
Thank you, Councilmember. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Give it a few seconds. Okay. Would anyone care to make a motion? Council President Hunt?
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Deputy Council President Ray?
This is Chris Ray. I second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded, and I'll ask the city clerk to do a roll call vote.
Thank you. We'll be starting with Council President Hunt.
Aye.
Councilmember Mart?
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember De Michelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
That's seven ayes, zero nays.
Thank you, city clerk. That passes unanimously. We're now going to move into the regular business portion of our meeting. And first up out of four items is AB 8080. It is the 2021 docket of proposed comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments. And the request before council this evening is to approve the docket. So I'd like to invite Senior Planner Kristen Leeson up to present the item.
Here we go. Third time's a charm. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. I am here to discuss the 2021 docket of proposed comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments. The purpose tonight is to review, deliberate, and take action on the proposed docket. As a reminder, comprehensive, comprehensive plans may be amended once a year. And to ensure that that is done the right way, we are required to approve the docket. And the docket is a list of items, a list of proposed amendments that will then be studied and considered and voted on at a later time. This ensures a holistic look, a holistic consideration of comprehensive plan. First thing on the docket is the land use element. So Tables L1 and L5 are related. Each year, we send information to the Office of Financial Management, who then returns to us confirmations and numbers. One of those confirmations is the number of housing units that we have in the city. Several years ago, the city council asked us to track our units toward our state mandated housing target, and that's where that number goes. They also send us household projections and estimate, population estimates, in which then we are supposed to do population projections. That comes as well. That information doesn't become available until, since until June. We are also looking at Table L3, jobs toward the 2031 adopted state job target. That also comes from the state in June and is another item that council asked us to track back in 2016. This year, we get to update Issaquah's remaining land supply and capacity. This information comes from the growth capacity study that is done periodically. It was started in 2019, late 2019, wasn't quite complete last year, and I believe it will be done on March 5th of this year, so we get to update it. Lastly, we will, there is going to be a new climate change plan. So to ensure consistency between the goals and policies of that plan and our comprehensive plan, we will probably need to make some amendments. Next come our proposed redesignations and rezones. This one comes from the city. It is Blackberry Park, little over half an acre. It's an existing park, currently with a dozen, with a land use or designation of low density residential. The proposed designation is community facilities. The existing zoning is single-family small lot, and the proposed zoning is community facilities recreation. Just as a reminder, the land use designation is sort of an umbrella that is in the comprehensive plan, and certain zoning districts fit within that umbrella. And then you have permitted uses and regulations that are attached to the zoning. Second request from the city is Anthology, formerly known as Gateway. It's about six and a half acres. It is, currently has a multifamily residential land use designation, and the proposed designation is community facilities. The existing zoning is village residential. Parcel B, the requested zoning, is community facilities recreation. And the proposed zoning for C is community facilities open space. Next is the Harvey Manning, Harvey Manning Park Extension, which is formerly known as Bergsma. And there are six parcels associated with this, with a lot of acreage. I can't do the math right now. It's currently a low-density residential designation with a request for community facilities. We have both single-family suburban and single-family estates zoning currently here, but the request is that all parcels be zoned community facilities open space. Touch on these really quickly. As a reminder, community facilities recreation allows for parks, it allows for fields, it allows for restrooms and picnic tables. Community facilities open space, however, allows for trails, maybe an overlook, maybe a bench. It's limited on what can go there. Lastly is a request from a private property owner. It's called the Milano property. That's what we're calling it. It is 0.81 acres. It is located on the sort of west side of Newport Way, across from the Gateway or Anthology rezones, as you can see. It's currently a low-density residential designation, and the property owner is requesting multifamily residential. The existing zoning is single-family suburban, and the proposed or requested zoning is multifamily medium. There's currently a single-family house located on this property, and the property owner is proposing to put in rental townhomes. Old Town Subarea Plan, we just need to do some updates to the action program. Part of it is years when things are going to happen. Part of it's just updating what can, some of the things that can and can't be done, and then updating this implementation status chart that council asked us to include last year. The capital facilities element, all we need to update is the capital, is the public facilities map. We need to add the community center, pool, senior center, and pickering barn. As you all know, we are in the middle of the Title 18 cleanup, and there will likely be some amendments, some adjustments or amendments that need to be made to the comprehensive plan and to the, and to the central Issaquah plan as Title 18 is updated. That's all I have on the docket. To, you, your options tonight are either to approve the docket as presented, to approve the docket with changes, or do not approve the docket, which means that there would be no comprehensive plan amendments this year. And our recommendation is to approve the docket as presented. And just to let you know, the timeline process, the PPC held a public hearing on January 28th. You all take action hopefully tonight. March through August, we work on individual amendments. June through September, PPC reviews the amendments. The public hearing is held in September and October, and it comes back to the council in November for study session and then December for action. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. Looks like we have a couple of questions lining up as well. Let's start with Councilmember Mart.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Mart. Can we take a look at that Milano property again, please?
Yes.
So the first thing, and I, I looked it up because it was so funky, it doesn't have access to a road, does it? So how, how does the, how does the homeowner currently access Newport?
There's a driveway. I have not found a, an actual recorded easement on the site next to it. It would have to access through the site where it says Northwest Pacific Place. It's like U place. That's where they would have to access through. I have not found an easement, but there is a driveway currently that goes through that property.
Yeah, onto, onto Newport. Okay, so the second question that I have is, this is not in central Issaquah, right?
Right.
Okay. So there has to be a public benefit to going to higher density, right? So what's the proposed public benefit here?
The proposed public benefit from the applicant is that they're adding housing, needed housing to Issaquah.
All right. And so the option, so if we approve the docket today, are, we're not approving this? This isn't, this wouldn't be final approval. This would just be to allow the administration to work on the proposal, right? And then as you showed, it would come before us in December?
Exactly.
Have, have we allowed housing, increased housing to function as the public benefit on increased density in the past? Haven't we usually required some other public benefit?
We have not allowed it as far as I'm aware, but then I think we've only had four requests for, four private requests for upzones or rezones in 20 years.
Councilmember Mart, do you mind if I ask the clerk or the administrator a question? I think the docket is just an item that is set up to explore whether or not you might want to do it. So I want to, I'm wondering if there is a format that a conversation can come back to you in the council where you can ask some probing questions. I just, I'm not sure if it's tonight, so if you don't mind, let me check with the clerk and the administrator and see, because you sound like you have some interesting questions.
And, and Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'd ask Jim Haney, the city attorney, to chime in.
At some point.
Just trying to turn on my video. Thank you. The, the decision on the docket is, as Councilmember Mart said, just a decision to allow this to be explored. It is not a final approval. There are no criteria in either the code or in state law for approval of the docket. It's an entirely discretionary decision on the council's part. So there is no requirement in city code or state law that a public benefit be found at this point. Certainly, there are criteria for approval of the comprehensive plan amendments in the city code, and you would need to meet those, it would need to meet those in order for it to be a to be approved, but there's no criteria for placing it on the docket at this point.
I guess I'm wondering, Mr. Haney, if the council, if Councilmember Marks or others wanted to provide commentary on this particular item on the docket, what would be the venue that they could do that, where they could have their questions posed so that staff can take them away and go through the public process with them?
Well, they certainly can pose questions now if they believe it is relevant to the determination of whether to keep the, or put the rezone on the docket. If they wish, they can make that determination and put it on the docket and then ask questions later. This is a legislative process, so they can raise those questions at any time.
Great. Okay, let's go back to Councilmember Marks then. Councilmember Marks?
I'm done with questions. Thank you.
Okay, great. And then we have Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman here, staying with the Milano property. We heard one question, or my understanding is that this one was a walk-on, and Kristin, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I think we got a comment that this was a walk-on, and was it not on the agenda before PPC? And if that's the case, then I'm wondering if somebody can address what the, if that's okay, if that's proper procedure, that's really the basis for my question. Thank you.
So this is Kristin Leeson, and it was sort of a walk-on. It was, the application was submitted the evening of 26th of January. The public hearing was 28th of January, so the commission heard about it on the 28th. I added it to the presentation. This is allowed to happen. The private sector is allowed to make requests for amendments, potential amendments on the docket until either the second meeting in January or January 31st, whichever comes first. So had this person come to the meeting that night and presented it at that time, it still could have been accepted and added to the docket.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. We'll go to Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. So my understanding is, once we approve the docket, these are the items that the administration reviews, and no other changes can be made or considered this year. Is that correct?
That is correct. There are some certain, the private sector may not make any more requests after the public hearing, so they can no longer do that. Tonight, if the city council wanted to add some things to that or change it, the city council may do so.
Okay. I'm thinking about Title 18 and where we are in progress of that. If we make progress on Title 18, let's say we have some things ready in, say, September or October that would have to go through the comprehensive plan, would they have to wait until 2021?
2022, do you mean?
Yes, yeah. My gosh.
You're in '21.
This is Kristin, and it kind of depends. The Planning Policy Commission needs time to consider any of the changes. It could not be, we already have a placeholder for any amendments that come up due to the Title 18 updates, whatever those may be. But the Planning Policy Commission still needs time to consider that and, you know, have a public hearing on that with the rest of the amendments. And I will let Jim Haney correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding, as long as we had time to still consider that, then yes, it could be included as part of this year.
There's two issues. One is, when you have comprehensive plan amendments, you have to consider them all at the same time so that you can look at the cumulative effects. So the first issue would be, had they been considered in a public hearing by the Planning Policy Commission together with all of the other amendments to consider the cumulative effects? The other issue is SEPA, and when we do SEPA on comprehensive plan amendments, we're doing it on all of the comprehensive plan amendments on the docket. And so it would need to be, anything that we come up with would need to be added and considered in that SEPA process whenever that is going to occur, likely in August or September, if I understand it correctly.
SEPA standing for?
The State Environmental Policy Act.
Thank you. I lost place. Was that Councilmember Walsh that we were on? Okay. So, Chris, thank you very much. Kristin, if you could pull up the capital facilities map. Councilmember DeMichele has a question on that, or comment on that.
Thank you. This is Councilmember DeMichele. Kristin and I have actually been emailing back and forth on this for, on some very technical questions, but just want to put it on the record. I noticed that there were some errors on the map, actually when we did the Mass Tumability Plan, and I had, I talked about it at that time, and I was just requesting that we make sure those corrections are made as we go through the process this year. Very specifically, Tiger Mountain Community High School is still listed as a school on the map, and it's been closed for six years. It was replaced by Gibson Eck High School. We need to indicate where Gibson Eck is and give it a place on the map. And then there's a very confusing designation, number nine, for the new, the proposed new schools at Providence Heights. And so I requested a clarification on the language for that designation. So those are very technical issues, but Kristin advised me that I should probably put those on the record, so I am doing so.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. Next, we have a question from Council President Hunt.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I had asked a question before about things that could be changed with the docket after it was approved, and I just wanted to confirm the other category of things that can be changed is city-initiated proposals, and from your email, wanted to confirm that those can be added at any time to the docket.
I apologize, I forgot to unmute. This is Kristin. As Jim Haney just mentioned, they can be added as long as they are city-initiated, but they still have to be done before the public hearing, and the planning policy has to have time to consider those.
Okay, thank you.
Ask me if I didn't see.
Anything to add, Mr. Haney?
Just that, again, they have to be done so that they can be done through the State Environmental Policy Act process as well. So anything that, anything can be added by the city after the docket is established, but you do have to have a final docket to do the State Environmental Policy Act determination on, and then for the PPC, Planning Policy Commission hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Haney. I am not seeing any additional questions or comments at this time. Is someone prepared to make a motion? Oops, I am. Councilmember Goodman, it sounds like you have a question.
Never mind. Thanks.
Okay, I'm going to go to Council President Hunt for a motion.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I move to approve the 2021 docket of proposed comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments as presented.
Deputy Council President Ray?
This is Chris Ray. I second it.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded, and I'm going to get the city clerk to do a roll call, though.
I believe this is appropriate for council to discuss.
Sorry, yes, you're absolutely right. Cancel discussion. I will check in the comment section to look for raised hands. Thank you. Let's start with Council President Hunt, followed by council, oh, let's start with Council President Hunt.
Actually, I think maybe Councilmember Marks has indicated. I'll go after Councilmember Marks.
Okay. The way I was reading it was, it sounded like you had a comment, and it sounded like he had wanted to discuss a motion.
Yeah. I'd like to propose amending AB 8080, 2012 docket of proposed comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments to remove proposed amendment number six, redesignation/rezone private property parcel 202 406 9056.
Thank you. And before we go to a second, I just want to check in with our attorney, Mr. Haney, if you are allowed to deny a request for a rezone. Mr. Haney?
You are allowed to deny a request for the, to go on the docket. The docket, as I said, is entirely discretionary, and it is up to the council as to whether it approves any item to move forward on the docket.
Thank you. Then I will look for a second. A few more seconds. Council President Hunt?
This is Council President Hunt. I'll second.
Thanks. So it has been moved and seconded to promote, propose amending AB 8080, 2021 docket of proposed comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments to remove proposed amendment number six, redesignation/rezone private property parcel 202 240 69056. And going into discussion, maybe we'll start with a question from Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. Trying to understand what the difference is between potentially removing something from the docket at this point versus having it progress to the point of comprehensive plan. Once we're looking at making these annual amendments, what options would we have, and can we deny one item and not the others at that point?
And assuming Councilmember Walsh that that would be for Mr. Haney? Mr. Haney?
Yes. Right now, you have the opportunity to use your discretion to determine whether or not you want to place something on the docket. Again, all the docket means is that you are compiling a list of amendments which you desire to have the staff work on, the Planning Policy Commission to consider, and you to take action on at the end of the year. If you decide not to place something on the docket, it means that there will be no further action on it this year. It can come back next year potentially. If you put it on the docket, you still have every right at the end of the proceedings to make a decision not to approve it, and you can say you're not going to approve it even though you're approving the others. It's just you do have criteria in your code for approving comprehensive plan amendments, and as long as you can differentiate that some of them meet your criteria and some of them don't, you have the ability to do that in the end.
Any other comments or questions on the amendment? Councilmember Marks to speak to the motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Marks. You know, I realize it's, we could wait to do this till later, but I think that this, on the face of it, there's no reason to move forward with this potential amendment. I don't see any argument for it. I believe it clearly violates both the growth and development and environmental stewardship goal of our strategic plan. No public benefit has been proposed for it. It's outside the central Issaquah plan area, which is where we believe growth should occur. So I just, I don't see any arguments in favor of it, and in a year where our staff has limited resources, I don't see, I don't see why they should spend time on something that just, on the face of it, doesn't meet any of our criteria for the, for us considering upzones. We always have real public benefit when we consider options like this, and there's none in this proposal. So let's just, let's get it off the plate now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Marks. Any other council members wishing to comment, or anybody with questions? Council President Hunt with a question?
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I have a question. Was there any discussion on this at planning policy? And then also, does the staff that reviewed the application, did you see anything else that we should be aware of or that was discussed at planning policy regarding this item? Because I, I'm just asking if there's more information to it. Thanks.
Thanks. Kristin?
Hi, this is Kristin. And Planning Policy, Planning Policy Commission did not have any more discussion on it. I didn't have much to present, however. Honestly, I don't give particularly, as Councilmember Marks just pointed out, I am the sole long ranger right now, so don't, until the docket is approved, I don't have the time to give it my full consideration, and so I have not done that yet. I did look at the application, though, and it was deemed complete, so that is why it is included on the docket now.
Thank you, Kristin. Next question is from Councilmember Walsh.
In listening to Kristin speak, I just completely blanked on my question, so I'll let it come back to me.
Yes, that's allowable. Deputy Council President Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. This is Chris Ray. Over the next year, if we were to put this on the docket, would the applicant or the requester for the rezone have an opportunity to provide more information about what they plan to do, including possibly outlining a public good, or is everything that they're going to do done?
I'll go to Kristin for that.
All right, this is Kristin. The applicant would have an opportunity. This goes to the Planning Policy Commission a couple of times before it goes to public hearing, and they usually have questions, and then the property owner has time to answer those questions. And reviewing the applications, too, I found out last year that I had questions, so I contacted property owners to find out more about their intents or questions that I couldn't figure out from, you know, information available, information available to me.
Thank you, Kristin. Councilmember Walsh remembers your question, and that was that. So now we'll go to Councilmember Goodman with a comment.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman here. Are we just at questions or comments?
It is open for a discussion right now. Questions or comments? We have a proposed amendment on the table that's been seconded, and we're just discussing it or making comments.
Thanks. So from what I'm hearing, the request to put this on the docket was allowed. It was timely, and I don't have any information before me to, to decide that it shouldn't be on the docket. We have denied things in the past. The applicant takes a risk that they're going to, you know, be a part of this process for several months, a better part of a year, and then have something potentially denied. If I were a property owner, I would think it's not fair to not let me at least go through the process, and they spend time and probably money doing that. So I don't think I support this, taking it off the docket. I have no idea how I might, just what I might decide to do at the end of this process, but I think it's fair to the applicant if they've done everything right at this point, and they have an opportunity for the rest of the year to take part in the process, to provide enough information that we can decide whether to approve it or not. I think it's, I think it's, I think it's fair to leave it on the docket, so I would not support removing it. Thanks.
Keeping my eye on the chat to see if there are additional questions or comments. We have an amendment on the table. Council President Hunt with a question, followed by Councilmember Marks.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I think this was mentioned, but I just wanted to ask it again. There isn't actually any criteria for us to consider when removing items from the docket. We can just do that at our discretion if we choose. Is that correct?
Mr. Haney?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Back to Councilmember Marks for a comment.
Sure. So I think, so I have almost two acres high up on Squawk Mountain. If I put in a request to convert my property to multifamily, higher density, it would, it would get, it would get, you'd shoot it down tonight. This is adjacent to higher density, but we don't, you know, we don't put higher density outside the areas where we've targeted for higher density. It's one of the fundamental concepts of the city, is that we have, with the central Issaquah plan, and then reenshrined with our strategic plan, targeted areas for higher density and said, beyond those areas, single-family housing will remain single-family housing. So I see no reason to look at this today. So I hear the arguments to counter, but I think it goes against everything that we've said about managed growth in our community over the last decade. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Marks. I'm going to give it a second. I'm not seeing any additional questions or comments right now. I'll wait another second. Okay. So the amendment that's on the amendment that's on the table is to amend AB 8080, the 2021 docket of proposed comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments to remove proposed amendment number six, redesignations/rezone private property parcel 202 406 9056. And I will go to the City Clerk for a roll call vote on the amendment.
Thank you. City Clerk Edgar speaking. We will start with Councilmember Martz. Councilmember Martz?
Aye.
Thank you. Counsel, excuse me, Deputy Council President Ray?
Nay.
Councilmember Walsh?
Nay.
Councilmember De Michelle?
Nay.
Councilmember Goodman?
Nay.
Councilmember Hall?
Nay.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Those are two in favor and five opposed.
So the amendment does not pass. We'll go back to the main motion, and I will leave it open for a few seconds to see if there are additional comments or questions before we go to the vote on the main motion. I am not seeing any, oh, there we go. Council President Hunt?
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I, I think one, one ask that I would have from this conversation is to make it clear to the applicant of this one parcel that we did have a conversation, that we are, that we do have these substantive questions about the application for the rezone on that one parcel. Because as Councilmember Goodman mentioned, this can be a labor-intensive, time-intensive, money-intensive process to go through this application process. And so just want to be clear with the applicant that even from the beginning, we are having questions. And then other than that, I am in support of the items that are on the docket, and I think we'll have a lot of conversations coming out of the Title 18 discussions this year.
Thank you. Not seeing any other additional comments. The main motion on the table is to approve the 2021 docket of proposed comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments as presented. It has been moved and seconded. City Clerk, do you want to do the roll call vote?
Yes, thank you. Clerk Edgar speaking. We will start with Deputy Council President Ray.
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember De Michelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt? Councilmember Martz?
Aye.
That's seven in favor. Zero opposed.
Thank you, City Clerk. That passes unanimously. And we'll move on to the second item under regular business, which is AB 8127, funding for emergency housing. And the request tonight is that council approve or authorize the funding. And I'd like to invite Human Services Manager Monica Negriola to present this item. Welcome, Monica.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening and good evening, councilmembers. I'm gonna just need a moment. I think I'm presenting now. So thank you for having us here tonight. We are seeking city council authorization to allocate $45,000 in additional funds for emergency housing shelter services. Our intent with this funding request is to support the homeless outreach services in the next few months, specifically in the next 90 days. And as background information, at the January 26, 2021 council study session, we sought council's direction regarding a proposed allocation of $75,000 towards emergency shelter services. The proposal was part of the COVID-19 pandemic response and recovery task force. And at that time, the city council directed us to return to a regular council meeting with a specific proposal for how we will spend the $75,000. Since then, we amended the original recommendation to the newly proposed $45,000 to better account for the estimated capacity needs in the next 90 days. Additional background information, a detail regarding service needs, I wanted to add that, as you may know, shelter capacity has been an issue for a very long time. However, due to COVID pandemic restrictions, additional strains have been put on the already limited shelter capacity. And in addition to the safety restrictions, we also, many of the shelters on the east side had outbreaks among shelter staff and participants. So all of the shelters on the east side currently have very limited or no capacity to accept new referrals. This causes challenges for our outreach coordinator, and he has difficulties effectively responding to the homeless needs in our community. So our goal really with requesting these funds is to provide a tool for the outreach worker in order to help him be more effective in responding to the needs of our homeless community members. So specifically, our proposal and how we would spend these funds, we would like to propose that $40,000, specifically $40,200, go to, towards adding capacity. This would be added newly, this would go towards adding new emergency housing shelter capacity. The funding will not support shelter deficits or budget deficits, nor would support rental assistance for existing housing. We are hoping that funding for additional rental assistance or other preventative services will be addressed at a future date, once we would have more information regarding expected state and/or federal refunds. In addition, in terms of timeframe, we would like to spend the money in the next 90 days. We would like to focus on the timeframe between February and April. We would estimate that the average bed night, the average cost for bed night would be about $67. This is cost estimated based on also leveraging existing funds that our shelter provider currently has. And in addition to the $40,000, we are hoping to allocate $4,800 towards flexible funds. These will be spent on, as needed basis. Sometimes we have various costs that come up from changing a tire for someone who lives in a car, or moving costs, or ID expenses, or other miscellaneous fees. So we would like to allocate $4,800 towards that. And we are also proposing that the number of residents served with these funds will be included in a report at the end of the 90-day period. We left the number of residents open, although we can estimate if you want to approximate number. However, we wanted to leave it open just because actually the purpose of providing these funds and the purpose of having an outreach coordinator in the first year is to actually provide us a, a better idea of the number of residents that need support. So with that, in terms of options and who we would spend the money for, we selected Snoqualmie Valley Shelter Services as one of the providers that we already work with, and we fund through the Human Services Fund. The number one reason why we select Snoqualmie Valley Shelter Services as our partner is because they have a current capacity for expansion and even more so an immediate ability to increase capacity. They also serve all genders and individuals as well as families. And also, we have an opportunity to leverage other funds with them. I think you might have heard earlier in the meeting, we had someone who was commenting that the Snoqualmie Valley Shelter Services was able to lease space for a long period of time. This allows them and allowed them the capacity to move from winter shelter services to a 24/7 model. They also received King County funds recently. So we are able to leverage all those resources in order to really increase capacity in a short period of time. And so with that, in a summary, again, our request tonight is that we would like to seek support from council to allocate a total of $45,000 for emergency housing shelter services, to support the outreach services, and to support the homeless individuals in Issaquah, specifically distributing the $45,000 towards $40,000 and $200 to Snoqualmie Valley Shelter Services for expanded capacity for emergency housing. That will be as motels or shelter in a congregate module, and $4,800 to set aside for flexible funds. In terms of timing and next step, once we, if we receive city council approval, we would pursue with contract amendment and service delivery. And we are gonna have a 90-day report at the end of this period. And so with that, I'm gonna stop, and we can take questions.
That's great. Thank you, Monica. And it looks like the first question we have and comment is from Councilmember De Michelle.
Thank you. This is Councilmember De Michelle. Well, first of all, thanks to Monica and Michael Mathias and EFR and the wonderful team that you put together and the magnificent job you did of finding housing for people this, this, during this snowstorm and the severe weather. So I'm just, I'm just so proud of you and thank you for all your service. My question is, I think when we discussed this earlier, I actually was asking why we weren't spending more than $75,000. So, so I can live with the $45,000, but I'm concerned about the 90-day reporting period. If we have another round of bad weather or flooding, which is predicted in the next, you know, few weeks here, and we use up all this money in the first 30 days, is there going to be a flexibility to bring this back earlier than the 90 days? And Monica, I don't want to put you on the spot. That might be a question for Wally Bobkowitz, so.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle. You know, Monica is working on issues related to COVID and the fact that there aren't very many shelter spaces open. But during the year, we do suffer emergencies, and we do spend money without coming back right away. So I'll let Administrator Bobkowitz explain how that happened.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Yes, we do spend money in emergencies. So we would do that. I think we're looking tonight for just general direction from the council confirming that this is the way you want to go. We put a short timeframe on this because of the circumstances continue to change. And we want to be mindful of the council's concern about funding. We're still waiting to see what the federal government might provide. So we thought 90 days was a prudent approach, but certainly if there's extraordinary circumstances, we'll take a proper action.
Okay. I appreciate that. And could I have one more question?
Absolutely.
I appreciate the fact that, you know, that we'll be flexible on, on the time there. I just, you know, the question just went right out of my mind. I just, I kept thinking it was going to come back, and it's just not coming back. So I will let others ask, and then I'll come back if it comes to me.
Okay, that's funny. And I'm gonna stall to give you some time, because Councilmember Ray got his question answered. So I'll stall. Also, I'll just take the temperature. We have a few more items this evening. We are two hours into our meeting, and I'm wondering if at some point after we deal with this particular AB, you would like a five-minute break. Oh, a couple thumbs up. Thumbs up. Okay. So there was my big stall. Back to Councilmember De Michelle, if you can remember your question. Okay. So looking for a, okay, sorry, we do still have another question. Council President Hunt?
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. It's related to Councilmember De Michelle's questions. I wondered if, in the event that we are approaching the $40,000 limit before, significantly before the 90 days, if you could just report back to council. I think it could be even email. But I think that might address some of the concern. And I think we've done that with some other new programs that we've been rolling out that we weren't sure exactly how, how long or how quickly we would use funding.
Yeah, great. That's not an issue at all. Thank you. And thank you, Monica. I am looking, Council President Hunt, would you care to make a motion?
Thank you. Yes, I will make a motion. I move to authorize the allocation of $45,000 for emergency housing shelter services to help support individuals who are homeless in Issaquah as presented, and direct the finance director to include $45,000 in a subsequent 2021 budget amendment from the general fund.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Ray?
Thank you. This is Chris Ray, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay. So checking, no discussion. Oh, we do have a comment. Council President Hunt?
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I'll be brief. I, I wanted to say also thank you for, for their response during the snow event, and also thank you for putting together this very comprehensive proposal in terms of helping individuals experiencing homelessness. And I appreciate the, this response very much, and the approach, and the explanation of the approach.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. I saw some other head nods here as well. Seeing no other comments, the motion before you is to authorize the allocation of $45,000 for emergency housing shelter services to help support individuals who are homeless in Issaquah as presented, and direct the finance director to include $45,000 in subsequent 2021 budget amendment from the general fund. And it's been moved and seconded, and I'll go to the City Clerk for a roll call vote.
Thank you. We'll begin with Councilmember Walsh.
Aye.
Councilmember De Michelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember Martz?
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
That's seven in favor. Zero opposed.
Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. I move this into the third item under regular business, which is AB 8128, business assistance grants. And again, the request this evening is to authorize funding. Thank you very much, Monica. I probably should, I wanted to preface this with a few comments, and I probably could have done this before item B, but just for those who were not aware, items B, C, and D today are proposals that were presented to council in a study session a few weeks ago relating to items and suggestions that the council may want to consider during COVID and the economic recovery. So I'm just gonna add a few comments right now and then move into the staff presentation. So before we move into this item this evening, I wanted to offer some opening comments. Any businesses in Issaquah are currently hurting due to the closures and partial openings that have been part of a very responsible set of actions taken by our state and county health department to control the coronavirus and its dreadful impacts on our community. I believe it is important to move additional business support forward now and have included it in this particular agenda bill. The council recently had a study session on additional COVID-19 funding, support for businesses, and has provided feedback, which was incorporated into the proposal recommended in the next agenda bill. I want to highlight that it's been a very difficult 11 months to truly understand the totality of all of the needs and the long-lasting impacts on our community as we move forward, and that we are still in the midst of both the health crisis and its financial fallout. This is the third and likely not the last time that I will be proposing financial support. There have been numerous uncertainties that still remain and many moving parts, and that has made it very difficult each time we have to move forward. has made it very difficult each time we have to move forward with a decision on one of these proposals. Today, there were a number of additional emails from council members requesting additional data, and I want to ensure that all council members are provided with an opportunity to review these questions and answers and to consider them prior to making a decision on the funding. And since this information only circulated today by email and was not available to the public, it would be good in tonight's presentation to have our city staff review the questions and provide those answers on camera so that the public is also informed. If the city council continues to have questions, they may opt to not act tonight and move to consider at a later date. The administration's recommendation is for approval this evening. So, I will now call on, I believe it is Jen. Oh, nope, it's Parks and Community. Oh, no, I'm on the wrong agenda item.
It is Miss Bean, Adam Mayor.
Okay, there you go. Thanks. Thank you for making me swirl all over on my tiny little screen. Thank you, Jen.
Okay. So, I can begin to my presentation or did you want to take a break first?
Oh.
You did a nice introduction, so I didn't, I don't want to.
I do believe the council would like a five-minute break. So, if it's okay with everybody, let's take five minutes. It's 9:12. We'll be back at 9:17. David, I was just going to check and see if you'd had the camera off or like do you need a warning from me to give you a five-second warning? I'll take that as a no.
Call out to our ICTV folks, David Mitchell. Just checking in with you. We're still on break. Want to make sure we're in the queue for returning when you're ready. How you'd like us to communicate that? Okay. Thanks. We're just waiting for a couple more people.
Yep.
And then the mayor will announce.
There we go. We have Councilmember Walsh. So, I'll just take five seconds till they call us back to order. Thanks. We are back from a five-minute break and I promised to keep a closer eye on the chat. Obviously, I guess I didn't need a break as much as everybody else because there were several reminders in there that I had missed it. So, we'll get back to having Jen start her presentation on A B 8128, Business Assistance Grants, with the ask being authorizing funding. Jen?
First, I need to unmute. I'm trying to share my screen and let's see if that works. Double-clicking it would help. So, good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Thank you for speaking with us, having us here tonight to talk about the business grants. We, tonight, we'll discuss the administration's recommendation to fund an additional $250,000 in direct business grants. I'll provide a summary of what past grants we've had to date and the options we explored as well as present our recommendation details. First off, as you know, in 2020, we provided three different grant opportunities funded by the state, pass-through, and King County pass-through CARES Act funding, as well as $500,000 of general funds. The small business response grants were for any business 25 employees or less that were impacted by COVID-19, and applications were due in July. The reinvention grants were focused on creative ways that businesses adjusted to the pandemic and applications were due in August. And winterization grants helped restaurants create safe spaces, outdoors and indoors, to serve their customers, and those applications were due in October. We funded 142 businesses through these processes. As you see in the slide, there were still over $600,000 of eligible grant applications that were unfunded. I will note that these estimates are based on our first look at eligibility. We double and triple-check to ensure that we don't disqualify somebody due to a mistaken answer on the application or other circumstance. As we looked at creating another, a new allocation for grant funding, we did look at a few options. One was to look at grants through the existed unfunded applications, so that would be through the small business response grant and the reinvention grant. We spoke to the Vision Partners, which includes the Greater Issaquah Chamber of Commerce, Downtown Issaquah Association, Visit Issaquah, Gilman Village Merchess Association, and Issaquah Highlands Council at two of our weekly Friday meetings. The input we received is noted on future slides. The conversation's focused on ensuring up-to-date information was collected from businesses, ease of application, and adjusting past processes to address businesses that have had different levels of expenses. In addition, we also looked at other King County city business grant programs. As you may remember, we were quick to respond early last summer, and many city grants, other city grant programs were instituted after ours. We reviewed the size of grants and size of businesses that other cities provided funding for. We spoke to the staff at City of Renton to learn more about how they collected information from businesses according to employee size. Again, our goal was to create a program that addresses the current needs and doesn't need to create an undue burden on businesses. Finally, our approach included the assumption that we would only fund businesses that did not receive a grant previously from the City of Issaquah. So, we looked at these three options. Again, grants to existing unfunded applications, continue to offer up to $10,000 for all businesses, and offer different grants and amounts for different types of businesses. Provides more details on the next slides. One other request from the council's study session was the idea of to take this funding and to find out how many businesses we could fund of those that applied in July as part of the small business response grant and also the reinvention grant. So, we crunched those numbers and as you see here, we could, if we only funded those businesses in the small business response pool, we could fund about 24 businesses at a little over $10,000 each. If we funded all the businesses in both the programs, taking out the winterization program, we could fund 53 businesses with just over $4,700. As we discuss this option with Vision Partners, we are all in agreement, the conditions have changed pretty drastically since July. A new grant application helps us to ensure that we help those that need the help now and also collect the information that would be helpful to report on if for future funding is reimbursed for this. When we looked at the grant amounts, one of the, one of the things we heard from some folks is that perhaps providing lower grant amounts would be able, allow us to fund more businesses. So, as we explored this, we looked at our different peer cities and what they provided. So, we saw that they did provide between $2,000 and $20,000. So, the amount that we provided was pretty much in that range. Again, as a reminder, our previous maximum grant requests were $10,000 for the business support, small business support, and the reinvention grants, and $5,000 for the winterization. That's a maximum grant request. They could always ask for less, but again, most businesses are asking for the full amount. We had discussions about the desire to help more businesses and in turn, we think that that's, we agreed that offering more grants to, lower amounts to more businesses made sense. So, that brings us to our, what, our recommendation. One of the other things we looked at is whether or not to offer to home-based businesses as we did in the first round or just to brick-and-mortar businesses. Some of our peer cities only provided to brick-and-mortars, but we, we do believe that, recognize that all the businesses types contribute to Issaquah's vitality. The home-based businesses live in our community, shop and die in our community, and pay taxes in our community. They may also employ employees as well. So, the input from Vision Partners was recognize that while both business types are deserving, brick-and-mortar businesses have commercial building overhead costs that home-based businesses don't have, as well as other expenses, and therefore, we should consider a higher grant amount to brick-and-mortar businesses. We did look at, at creating two tiers for brick-and-mortar business size related to their employee size. Again, one of the things that we heard from, some feedback from multiple people in the last round was that a one-person business may have received the same amount as a 20-employee business. We learned that some small businesses that rent space within another business may have received a $10,000 grant while that owner of that larger business did not receive anything. We do recognize that the grant to the sub-leasee did help them pay the rent to the business owner, but it did feel a little uneven. The conversation around this topic was robust with our Vision Partners. There was not consensus in this part of the proposal because it's easy to find anecdote that made the proposal solution not make sense. Overall, there was consensus that employee size, for the most part, related proportionally to overhead costs. For instance, a business that had three employees leased less space than a 20-employee business. Payroll, of course, costs increased with employee size and thus impact to our community. Throughout the nation and here regionally, we have learned that smaller businesses were less successful to receive the full benefit of what they're eligible for through the first round of the federal paycheck protection program. And so, we really took that into account as we developed our recommendation. So, getting to, this brings us to the tonight's recommendation from the administration. So, we recommend three different business categories for moving forward with a business grant. One, for home-based businesses, no matter what the size of their employee count. So, that maximum grant amount would be $2,500 and we would provide approximately 10 business grants. Again, if people applied for less than $2,500, we would be able to provide more business grants. The next one would be for brick-and-mortar, for 10 employees or less, that maximum grant amount would be $5,000. The pool amount for this amount is larger, so we can help more smaller businesses. So, we'd be able to provide at least 25 businesses a business grant. And then, the brick-and-mortar businesses of size of 11 to 25, we would offer up to $7,500 and we would have approximately 14 businesses for a total of 49 businesses that we could fund through this grant program. Our plans, our next steps are, if approved tonight, to open the application period tomorrow morning and accept applications through March 8 at noon, and awards will be made by March 31. If, that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Jen. I'm going to keep an eye on the chat to see if there are any questions or comments. Okay. We will start with Deputy Council President Ray.
I just barely got in there. Hi.
You did. It was a bit of a horse race. Got by a nose.
Chris Ray, can we talk a little bit about the timeline? So, if we approve this tonight, you will go ahead and do the grant applications, you know, immediately. Leave that open for it looks like about two weeks and then about a three-week evaluation period. Is that the timing you're, you're suggesting on this?
Yes. And we do think we probably get the information, the approval out prior. The little caveat is we rely on other people to provide us some of the databases. So, our eligibility review consists of getting information from the Department of Revenue, their business license database, looking up in the Washington State Secretary of State corporate database, as well as getting information from our finance department. And then, if something looks a little askew, we make calls to businesses, make sure that, again, the information is correct. Sometimes, for instance, in our first round, somebody, several businesses, and I think it was one of those, they just kept going, yes, are, you know, are you following all the rules or do, have you, have you followed all the rules of Washington State and they wrote no? And it's like, oh, no, I meant yes, but they were answering no along the lines of the thing. So, we, so we want to make sure, again, we don't disqualify anybody. So, I do believe that we can get out before the 31st, but that's the process. We would, we would make, we would make sure that the word got out. We would inform all the businesses that did not get funded in the last few rounds. We would put it out through our business e-news, which has over 3,800 subscribers. We would send a separate email communication to our property owners and managers. We'd work with our Vision Partners to get the word out and of course, have it out in all of our social media and Insider. So, we think we can get the word out pretty quickly and simplify the application. It's a pretty simple thing, form online to do, and we can get it out, money in hands pretty quickly.
So, if we didn't take action tonight, what impact would that have on, on awards? Could we move ahead with this, this process? Could we move ahead with this process and just make the words contingent on council action?
You could do that. That would put some, you know, businesses would do the work and apply for it, and all the work would be done without the guarantee of being funded. We could do that.
And then, what, if any, I mean, is this going to be a lottery system again? Is that the thinking that we will award based on drawing straws?
Yes, and so, it's random. Yes, I'm sorry, I did not mention that. We do a random selection to ensure equity, that every type of business, no matter if they, you know, if they are known to us or not, has the same chance to be selected for a business grant. And so, that has worked well. Our peer cities have done the same, so it's something that we're going to continue to do.
And final question, if we, if someone has received an earlier grant, they would be eligible again for this round of funding?
We have suggested that they are not, but that can change.
Okay, that makes more sense to me. So, this is, these are from the pool of unfunded plus people who didn't apply for the earlier grant.
Mayor, you're muted. You couldn't hear that desk slap. I've been so good the last, like, 10 days. Okay, thank you, Deputy Council President Ray. Next question comes from Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Councilmember Hall. I had a similar question to the Deputy Council President about the random selection process of awardees, and you answered part of my question with what peer cities are up to. Can you speak a little bit to what the conversation was amongst the vision partners about that specific item? Or was that exactly what the conversation was, that they wanted to ensure equitable outcomes? And, you know, if we had any blind spots on potential businesses that we don't know of that they're still in the running?
Sure, I have to remind myself exactly of the details. I think there was some desire, there is some desire spoken from some of the partners that we do have some criteria and review that. I guess part of it, again, is we did help to select the first round of the Washington State Business Awards with a criteria list that was partially provided and we created. And it is really a challenge to decide which businesses are more deserving. Now, unless we wanted to be very descriptive and decide we want to focus on, there was a comment earlier about hospitality businesses and restaurants, then that's a lot easier. But to, everywhere you slice the pie, there's an opportunity to leave out businesses. If you say more employees are good because they're providing more jobs, then you leave out really small businesses. If you say that you provide more, an opportunity or more points for, again, size of space or type of business and other business types feel like they don't get a fair shake. So, it is a really challenge to truly be able to be subjective when you have a community where, you know, a lot of the business owners are known by those who would be reviewing it. So, we feel, again, to have an equitable opportunity for everybody who applies that's eligible to get that grant, that the random selection is the fairest way.
Jen, we have a couple more questions lined up, but one of the reasons I wanted to provide some comments earlier on was because there were some email questions today and email answers today, and because most of our council has jobs, and this is their hobby job, they may not have been able to read those emails. And I wonder, have you covered that in your content yet?
The, I did, I believe I did, to the email communication with Councilmember Hunt, President Hunt, and so, if she shakes her head no, that maybe I didn't address the comments, I can, she had some questions regarding the classification of the home-based businesses that includes, like, one employee, and also about the, something that really, really did make sense. It says, "One category for business size makes sense because employee counts change." Oh, and I did not address that, sorry. So, one of the conversations with the vision partners was that the recognition that some businesses have laid off either temporarily or permanently employees. And so, if they were going to mark off they have between, you know, 1 in 10 or 11 in 25 businesses, they may have had over 10 employees and have a much bigger space rented and leased and overhead, but currently, they may have less employees. And so, we spoke, when we spoke to our peers at the City of Renton, they had three tiers of business size, and we asked them how they handled that. And they helped us to identify, they used IRS quarterly reporting form that they required the businesses to submit to show true numbers, but they did allow them to use their highest number of employees in 2020. And so, that's what we would do as well. So, if a restaurant, for instance, had 15 employees, they had to scale back because of all the reductions, and now they have nine employees, they would still, if in 2020 they could show that form from the IRS or another documentation, they would be able to apply for that higher tier because they'd still have those higher overcosts, overhead costs, and, you know, again, plan to bring those employees back once things kind of get back to normal. There was an email interaction from Friday from Councilmember Walsh about just asking for information about nonprofits and the difference between C4s and C6s and what other peer cities have done. And I've shared that information. I cannot say that I'm an expert on that, but shared some information from the IRS definitions and didn't get into that in this case because that's not part of our recommendation.
Okay, thank you. And I guess we have some more questions, and so, if there are council members who didn't feel like the question they answered by email got answered, maybe they can repeat it here today as well, so everybody has the same information. Thank you for that, Jen. Let's go to Councilmember Walsh and then Councilmember DeMichele.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. So, one of the useful pieces of information that you had shared over email was kind of a history of all of the ways that we've responded to the COVID pandemic as far as budget allocations. And so, I wondered if you could talk about the, so you've shown on a previous slide one of the things about how much we have so far approved and allocated for business grants. But I'm wondering if you can talk about how much of that 1.3 million has come from CARES Act funding, basically pass-through money through us, which we are reimbursed for, versus the amount so far that we've allocated, which has come from our general fund, which basically means Isaguas taxpayers have paid for that. I'm wondering if you can talk through the difference in our past allocations?
Sure, that's pretty easy. $500,000 was general fund grants, so the remainder, $800,000 was pass-through care grants money. Now, most of that was through the state pass-through. We did have $50,000 from King County pass-through grants, and we actually utilized all of that for the Business Reinvention Grant Program, along with some other monies that, the $500,000 was added in to provide some additional funding, $45,000, so that's why it's a total of $95,000. So, again, $500,000 from general fund, the remainder from pass-through grants, CARES Act funding from the King County and the state.
Jen, can you clarify, or could you have Administrator Bob Kowitz clarify? If the feds do provide additional money, is the $500,000 from the general fund eligible for reimbursement?
We did follow all of the, when we did the care, the application, the funding, we did follow all the same rules we did for the CARES Act funding in anticipation if we could get reimbursed. And we talked to City Attorney Jim Haney to see if there's anything else we should do, also for this process as well. So, again, making sure that we meet the constitutional requirements to not gift public funds, et cetera. So, I don't know if Council or City Administrator Bob Kowitz has any other details about future federal funding.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As I think all of you are aware, we've been following what's happening in Washington, DC, mostly as we can. I think the best information that we have thus far is from the United States Conference of Mayors. They provided information which we passed along to council dated Wednesday of last week, when the U.S. House of Representatives began its discussion of actual language. So, the language that is currently being discussed as far as the use of funds for the additional dollars that would be mailed, all are as follows. The funds may be used to, one, respond to or mitigate the public health emergency with respect to COVID-19 or its negative economic impacts; two, cover costs incurred as a result of such emergency; three, replace revenue that was lost or later decreased as determined by the city based on revenue projections as of January 27, 2020, as a result of such emergency; or four, address the negative economic impacts of such emergency. That's pretty broad language. That's broader certainly than the CARES Act language from last year. So, if that language were to remain in the bill and money is allocated to Isaguas, I would think certainly anything the city is looking at for allocation, and the one date that was there was a January 2020 date, I think that we would be able to claim those dollars.
I'm going to go back to Councilmember Walsh to see if that fully answers your question.
Oh, I've got several more.
Do you want to take turns, or do you want to get all of yours out? I have Councilmember DeMichele and Hunt as well.
Um, I want to continue on this funding path, and then I'll section off the other questions. So, we've seen historically, then, of the 1.3 million, what we're looking at is half a million that, at this point, because we don't know what federal funding could be in the future, and we don't know if it would allocate to pass. So, right now, we've spent half a million dollars from general fund, about $800,000 from CARES funding, and we're looking at another $250,000. At this point, because we don't have any idea about federal funding, this 250 would come from general fund. Is that correct?
That's correct. And I think that at this point, we would have to characterize that we have some idea, that there is a language in the House bill now that actually goes down to the city level. So, we have a sense of what money we would be receiving, and that number is a little north of $7 million. So, it's really, it's not passed yet, it's not been approved, but I think this is the first time in, maybe through the entire pandemic, that at least we have some dollar amount attached to the City of Isaguas, and we have some language on how it could be spent.
Okay, I will save the other questions for a bit later.
Okay, I'll come back to you. Let's go to Councilmember DeMichele.
Thank you. This is Councilmember DeMichele. So, you touched on the question of the 501(c)(4s) and 501(c)(6s), and I'll also throw in the 501(c)(3s). And I understand the difference between each of those categories, and for the general public, those are all under the rubric of nonprofits. So, what I'd really like to know is, what was the discussion, and why haven't we opened up the grant application to those businesses that are under that category? Can you give me a little insight into what the thinking was there? Or is there federal law that prohibits offering grant applications to that group? I'd just like some more insight into why they weren't included.
That's great. We'll let Council, or sorry, City Administrator Bob Kowitz take that. And also, Wally, if you could talk about whether or not they were covered and whether or not they can be covered? Those would be two good questions to answer.
Sure. They are currently not covered in the administration's request. I think if council wishes to consider covering them, that certainly is a possibility. I think as we've shared information with the council, and I think many in the community are aware, 501(c)(3s), C4s, and C6s are all, are different kinds of nonprofit organizations. The C4 and C6 variety tend to be business-related, where the C3s are generally more general charities. As we've looked at the numbers of these in Isaguas, and Jen, if you have the specific numbers at your fingertips, it's several hundred C3s, and I think less than a dozen C4s and C6s. So, there's a big difference there. And I think when you talk about business, and as Mayor Polly has said in her comments earlier this evening, you know, we really want to focus on businesses. Clearly, there are a handful of nonprofits in Isaguas that you would consider business, that they operate, you know, have a brick and mortar location, they have employees. Others, nonprofits, are exactly that, usually a collection of volunteers. So, I think certainly if the council looks at this, if you wish to, you know, include C4s and C6s that have employees, you know, that may be something that the council wishes to consider. I think it was excluded really for the sole purpose, as Mayor Polly has indicated, to really focus on the needs of business. Really, nothing, nothing more complicated than that. But clearly, there are a handful of 501(c)(4s) and 501(c)(6s) in our community that operate as small businesses.
City Administrator Bob Kowitz, so could you take it a little bit further? I think what I'm hearing is that the council member would like to understand in the next round of funding, you described generally what would be allowed. Is there a possibility to open it up to this new round of federal funding?
You know, again, based on what we're seeing was passed along last week from the United States Conference of Mayors, it's a pretty broad definition of what the federal funding in this next round could be. So, if the council chose to do that, I think that, you know, the economic, I'll bring the language back up here, I think we would just have to connect how that, those particular nonprofits, you know, again, point four was address the negative impacts of such an emergency. So, you know, we have the Isaguas, greater Isaguas Chamber of Commerce, certainly they are focused on economic development, economic needs. We have Highlands Council also focuses on that. So, I think, you know, organizations like that are very clear. As you get into other kinds of, especially 501(c)(3s), I don't know that every 501(c)(3) would, you know, deal with negative economic impacts under those definitions.
And can I ask a follow-up, Mayor?
No, absolutely.
Sorry, Mayor Polly, sorry about that. Oh, dear, it's getting later. So, if we wanted to include, let's just say, 501(c)(3s), I think that C6s and C4s are clearly business-related, but if we wanted to go to 501(c)(3s), could we attach requirements to that group that match business requirements? In other words, brick and mortars, they have employees, and perhaps some language around their contribution, whether they have one or not, to the business environment? Because some of them, I think, clearly do have contributions to the business environment, and I would agree that others do not. So, if we had that language, would that be, could that be included as part of a future grant application?
And again, Councilmember DeMichele, members of the council, it's really up to the body how they'd like to do that. I'm clearly hearing from many members of the council that we would like to try to make sure that if there is federal funding available, that, you know, these funds could be reimbursed and covered. And I think, just as we're talking about it this evening, it's a harder needle to thread on the C3s, and I think we would just, if the council wishes to do, it would just be very prescriptive as to the type of C3 would be eligible.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. We'll be going to Council President Hunt, and then I hope she's ready because we're going to go back to Councilmember Walsh after.
Thank you. I have a question on the federal stimulus funding, and I think this is a question for City Administrator Bob Kowitz. To the best of our current understanding, which I know it's still evolving, but to the best of our current understanding, what's the timeline for when we expect to know that the federal funding is actually coming to Isaguas and the amount?
Thank you, Council President, members of the council. I think it's our best understanding that this is going to be a focus of the Congress's work in the coming couple of weeks. The United States Senate has been busy with other matters which have concluded, so their plate is now clear, and they are prepared to deal with this. Certainly, Certainly, in hearing President Biden's comments over the last several days, he's indicated that this is his number one priority. So, my guess is that in the next two or three weeks, these matters will be before the Congress and will be acted upon. There's already been groundwork laid. Again, the information we received from the Conference of Mayors was that it was, the work was beginning in the House on the specific language of the bill last Friday. I think the Congress is still on a President's Day recess, so I'm not sure how much work continued in the balance of this week, but certainly as they come back for next, next week. So, I don't imagine this is something that will linger more than a few weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, just to be fair, I will go to Councilmember Mertz before I go to Councilmember Walsh. Councilmember Mertz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Mertz. So, the, this seems to be the, a poster child for you can please some of the people some of the time, but have we taken this particular equation and gotten any feedback in the, from the community? I mean, obviously, any particular person in any particular situation would probably love to have their particular opportunity maximized, but have we gotten any feedback on the permutation that we have in front of us? Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, maybe Jen can help with this as well. I know that we have shared this with the Vision Partners. Again, that's a group of the economic development organizations within the city of Issaquah, the Chamber down, down Issaquah, Issaquah Highlands, Gilman Village Association. So, they have been through this. The Economic Vitality Commission also has had this information shared with them via email. They have not had a meeting. They have one coming up in what, Jen, the next week, 10 days, but it's also been shared with them. And I think the feedback we've gotten, as you've heard this evening, was pretty uniform. You know, focus on bricks and mortar, focus on number of employees, you know, the biggest criticism that we received from the first rounds of grants was that we did not focus enough on that. And so, what you see here tonight is really in response to that feedback we've received.
Um, I would just add one thing, City Administrator Bob Quitt. The items that you're seeing now are items that were suggested by the Issaquah Recovery Task Force, which is anywhere between 11 and 14 residents from our community, not necessarily from the business community, although I know at least Pavel runs a daycare here. So, they were the group that got a report out from each of the boards and commissions about potential COVID activities. And that's it as far as public outreach beyond what you would call reaching out to the business community itself. So, these are things that came out of that recovery task force.
Thank you.
And we're going back to Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. One of my main questions was the 501(c)(4)'s and (c)(6)'s, so I'm glad that Councilmember De Michelle had brought that up and asked the question. I'm wondering if you, Jen, can give us a sense of how our funding compares to other cities in the region? I know, obviously, all of the cities got some set of CARES Act funding, but do we have any sense whether any of the other cities have gone beyond their CARES Act reimbursed funding into their general fund for business grants?
And Councilmember Walsh, if it's appropriate as well, we have had some corporate help in Issaquah. We've had $25,000 as a corporate donation to one of our nonprofits, which is, are the kinds of things we don't keep tabs on. But I'm, I'm not sure if Jen is able to share or not tonight, but I know Kirkland also set up a foundation that receives grants and they were able to do business grants that way as well. That may be something interesting for us to understand.
Yeah, from what I understand, again, as Mayor Polly mentioned, so Kirkland was one of the early grants as well. They received a large donation from Google and distributed that money. Other cities have used community development block grant funds, and so I know that Everett and Seattle, we don't have a direct allocation, so that wasn't an option for us. Seattle also utilized some general funds. I'm not sure if the other cities added on to their CARES Act funding. A lot of, again, so Kent, Renton received much higher allocations and they then distributed higher allocations. And each city was varied according to even how much they distributed. For instance, some, again, some cities, as you probably know in the region, spent more of their CARES Act dollars reimbursing city costs versus other things. So, when we did, did that first initial general fund grant, we'd made a few calls around but hadn't got a lot of response. I think most people were kind of done with their grants and moving on to the next thing. But for the most part, the CARES Act funding has, we typically don't do business grants, the CARES Act funding provided that opportunity for the first time in a while.
Councilmember Walsh?
That's all. Thanks.
I am looking over the chat box, see if there, oh, Council President Hunt has a question.
Thank you. You had mentioned that under the proposed plan, the businesses would not be eligible if they had received city funding, but it's my understanding that if they received state funding or if they received PPP funding, that would, they would still be able to get city funding. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. The one thing we would require is that they can't have received a PPP loan, so that's Paycheck Protection Program, or another grant for eligible expenses. So, if they provided us with a receipt to say, we want to pay, we want, here's, you know, November and December's rent, they can't have also provided that receipt to SBA for reimbursement. So, we, you know, we have them sign the contracts stating that, we have them sign an accounting agreement stating that, and so we're really clear about those eligible expenses. I think we would, we talked about the details about focusing on the last quarter and since the last quarter for those expenses, that kind of does remove the, the ability, not the ability, but the overlap of expenses through those, those programs. The PPP program was mostly for payroll, so we think if we cover rent and some other expenses, we are okay with that.
Okay. Thank you. And then I think there is also state funding. Is there any same, is it the same sort of?
The same thing.
No double counting?
Yes, no double counting. Now, if they received a loan, so the PPP, you know, got converted to a grant, but if they receive a loan from their, from the bank, et cetera, those were allowed, you know, payments of loans were allowed through the federal funding because, again, they're not getting it free, they have to pay it back. So, they would be able to count that, but again, that's not a grant, they would have to pay that back. So, it's not double counting.
Okay, thank you.
Looking for additional questions or comments? Any council members who have not yet had an opportunity to ask a question, have any questions? So, we have several options now. As I mentioned in the process, the administration's motion is in the chat box. There were some other motions potentially being complimented. Complimented, well, okay, it's 10 o'clock. Contemplated as well, and so we're going to go to Council President Hunt for a motion.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I am going to move to postpone AB 8128 to March 15, 2021.
Councilmember Walsh?
This is Councilmember Walsh, I'll second.
So, it's been moved and seconded. And Council President Hunt, would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you. Yes, I would. This is Council President Hunt. My reason for making this motion is quite straightforward, I think. I, I have reason to believe, and the city administrator just spoke to this earlier, that we will have more information about the federal stimulus funding that is available to Issaquah and concrete information on that within the next few weeks. And the, I strongly believe and feel this way too, that the city has been very supportive of the business community and we've allocated 1.3 million dollars and, and as well as general fund money for the business community. So, I think we have demonstrated that we are very committed to this. In this particular case, we're about to get information that I think will help us make a better decision and we can consider the funding that is actually in hand and the timing is just within the next couple of weeks. So, I'm proposing that we postpone the authorization because we will know how much funding is actually available shortly and then we can focus this discussion tonight on the eligibility issue before us because I think if we clarify who's eligible for funding, then the application process could start. And in that case, if we are even receiving applications, I really don't see why we wouldn't, why we wouldn't make the best decision possible with all the information possible, which I believe we could do within the next couple of weeks. And we could have a study session, discussion, and actually discuss the merits of the allocations that are in the current proposal and how they address the needs that we've heard from the community and have that full conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh and then Councilmember De Michelle.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. I'll echo much of what Council President Hunt just said. I, I think with federal funding potentially coming forward, it is really hard to approve spending money from our general fund without knowing that that money is coming through. I, I think we have absolutely supported our business community and I would love to continue to do so. I just also have to be aware of our general fund in a year when revenues have been down, when we need to be protective of our own ability to continue running the fort. I am concerned about kind of putting the cart before the funding horse in that sense. I also think there are some questions still remaining around the 501(c)(4)'s and (c)(6)'s, how we can make those eligibilities happen. And then finally, from our study session when we talked about some of these potential areas, one of the things that several council members brought up was the sense of wanting to support some of the human services areas, particularly rental assistance, and that didn't come forward in this package. And if we're going to potentially receive a dollar amount from federal, I want to have a robust conversation about how that should be allocated out, making sure that we're supporting our city needs and backfilling some of the expenses that we've had there in this extraordinary year. And then also figuring out what our kind of overall need is as a community and how we can best support the community in, in just a focused effort. And so, that's why I'm going to support this alternate motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Councilmember De Michelle? Oh, you got caught, Barb.
Oh, a dollar for the jar. Okay. This is Councilmember De Michelle and I am supporting this motion. I think this is a really good time for us to take a deep breath and step back and see how we really want to spend the funding. I think circumstances have changed since the last time we talked about this. Previously, Congress was embroiled in an impeachment and they weren't focused on the, what I'm going to call the Biden package, the, the 1.9 trillion package that's being proposed. But now they are done with the impeachment and they're moving forward and from everything I'm reading, they're going to be moving very quickly on this. And I think hopefully it will be a very short period of time before we have some idea about the exact amount or at least a known amount that might be coming to the city of Issaquah. I would very much like to see the 501(c)(4)'s and 501(c)(6)'s included and I would like to just remind everybody that we're, we're not guaranteeing that, that 501(c)(4)'s or (c)(6)'s would get funding. All we're doing is allowing them to apply for the available funds. And 501(c)(3), if we can come up with some very clear guidelines around business, around rent needs, around employees, but clearly there are 501(c)(3)'s that provide an economic benefit to our city and I think they should be included as well and they haven't had the opportunity to apply for those funds. So, overall, I think, let's step back, let's, let's take a deep breath, let's do a little bit of thinking about who should be eligible and why and what kinds of funds will we have and can we create a more comprehensive and balanced package with the funding? And if it turns out that Congress doesn't move, we, we can set a timeline and, and move forward appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle. Councilmember Goodman?
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. So, I'm not going to support this. We have had businesses come to us in the last couple of months and we had businesses come to us tonight asking us for help. We heard a representative from one of the business associations say businesses are frightened, they're frustrated, they're scared, and that any money, any money at all is helping people keep employed. I guess my own personal experience is that my husband owns a business, not in Issaquah, so I don't have a stake in any of this decision that we, whether we fund business, more business grants or not. But I can tell you that business owners, at, at least mine, and I know many who feel the same way, feel a very strong moral responsibility to keep people employed and to keep the businesses open and to not lay people up. Because you don't just employ somebody, you feel responsible for their whole family, the well-being of their family. So, I do not understand at all why we would delay something for a month when people are coming to us, literally begging us for help. If we want to consider nonprofits, then we can direct the administration to bring back more information at a council meeting within the two weeks. I think that the, I would be perfectly willing to take the risk that we don't get reimbursed for an additional $250,000. I think it's a great investment to make in our, our local economy. I think we have an emergency here, it's a pandemic, and I do not believe that telling businesses that we need to take a step back and think about it and wait for Congress to do its thing, I don't think that that is, I just don't think that that's the right thing to do. I think the, the most I would consider would be reconsideration in two weeks, but not, not a month. So, I'll be voting no.
Thank you, Council, Deputy Council President Ray?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Chris Ray. I have a couple of, of thoughts on this particular motion. First is, I hear a very, very real and pressing need from our business community. And clearly, we heard during public comment, a number of our local merchants expressing not only their appreciation for what we, what we have done, but also a need for additional assistance to help them weather this storm. And I don't know if a month is the breakpoint where it won't work, but I did hear a certain amount of urgency in their, in their request. So, I think time is of the essence on this. I don't believe this is something we can take deferral, take lightly. I got to tell you, I don't share the city administrator's optimism on how well the Congress will work in Washington, D.C. I, I just think the mechanics of passing legislation, particularly a 1.9 trillion dollar piece of legislation, is not something that's going to happen easily and it's not something that's not going to go back and forth. So, I, I don't really honestly believe that we will have the answer. But if we have the belief that we're going to get the funding as, in, in the House bill as written, then I say, let's go ahead with the, the current grants because we're clearly in line for reimbursement and we have no risks to take and we're going to be in a better space. But I, I don't know that. But I do know that we need to take care of our businesses, we need them to be here and operational when the pandemic is over. We need them to, you know, to be able to sustain because that's our tax base, that's what makes people come to Issaquah, that's what drives our, our tourism, that's what makes us not a bedroom community, it makes us a, a multi-use vibrant community that we so desperately want. We have to have those businesses and I don't want to see them not be able to survive this. And, and so, I'm, I'm weighing this as time is of the essence. If, if we think that Congress is going to get their act together and come through with the House plan, then I think we're golden and I think we, we will get reimbursed for all of this and, and our general fund will get reimbursed. And if they don't, we won't know any different, you know, I, I just don't see the- And if they don't, we won't know any different, you know, I just don't see the point in delaying, quite honestly, I don't know that we will know it, I don't believe we'll know anymore, and if we do, what we'll know is what we're assuming now. So I don't, I don't think it's in our best interest to defer on this one.
Deputy Council President Ray, thank you. Councilmember Mart?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, this is Councilmember Mart. That's a tough one, but I think I'm going to not support the motion that's in front of us, because I see three, sort of three scenarios, three possible scenarios going forward. One is we get nothing, two is we get something like the amount of money we're talking about, and three is we get a bunch more money. I don't think in any of those three situations, I wouldn't want to spend $250,000 right now shoring up our businesses. So I think we'll have the opportunity, if we're lucky enough to get option three, then that'll be a great problem to have, and we can go back and see how else we want to support the community. But I agree, I feel, I feel a little touched by Councilmember Ray's comments, I agree with him that what makes us a real city and not just, you know, a bedroom community, the kind of city that I was so excited to move here a long time ago, seven, eighteen, eighteen years, eighteen years ago, you know, is having vibrant businesses as well as all the amenities for residents. And so I think now is the time to help out our businesses. And so I understand the urge to measure once, to measure twice and cut once, but I think this is a situation that calls for perhaps cutting, cutting is the wrong analogy, but we can have our cake and eat it too, I think, on this. And regardless, either way, whatever happens in D.C., and I think Councilmember Ray is also right to be very cautious, you know, some elected bodies are not as collaborative as ours, so I don't want to wait for D.C. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Mart. Council President Hunt, if it's okay, I'm going to go to Councilmember Hall first, he hasn't spoken yet. Thanks. Councilmember Hall, followed by Council President Hunt.
Thanks, Mayor Polly, this is Councilmember Hall. I hung back on making a comment, because I genuinely wanted to hear the argument for the motion and consider it genuinely, although I'll be voting against the motion tonight, I just, I'm kind of struggling to see the rationale, and I think Councilmember Goodman put it really, really well in her comments, so I won't, I won't repeat everything, but also to say that I was thinking too, that I'm perfectly comfortable having this hit to general fund if necessary. I was really, touched isn't the word, but moved by some of the comments we heard earlier today, and wrote down some similar to that have been said earlier, and I just think that those are compelling enough that I'll be voting against this motion. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall, I'm coming back to Council President Hunt, and anybody else who would like to have a second comment, please enter it in the chat box. Council President Hunt?
Thank you, this is Council President Hunt. I think, like I mentioned, the motion really was to give council the best opportunity to have a decision with information that is, I believe is coming shortly, or we have reason to believe is coming shortly to us. And I think we've made a lot of decisions, we've acted really nimbly and quickly, and in a lot of cases, that's been really, really important for our response to the pandemic, and in this case, the timing just, it seems like in this case, we could have more information. And also, council, when we discussed this proposal last study session, we did not actually have the details of the proposal in front of us, and we've also, as Mayor Polly mentioned, we had a bunch of emails, including spreadsheets and information about how much was reimbursed and how much hasn't been reimbursed, and what our total expense recovery is, and how much has gone to cities, which is about, how much has gone to businesses, which is about half, actually, and more than we've reimbursed our city expenses. So all of that information is important, I think it's important to consider how much federal funding we're getting, the timing to me seems like we could make a better decision shortly, and that's why I made this motion. I agree with all the statements about the importance of the business community, and part of why I mentioned in my comments earlier too, is this is the first time the council has discussed this actual proposal, and there's eligibility concerns around nonprofits, and I think that that's a good conversation for us to have. And then on top of that, there's questions about making sure that we're targeting the most need, the businesses that have the most need, and if we, if this proposal does that. And I think if we had one study session, we could have a better policymaking, and I think it's also our fiscal responsibility to consider that we're about to get more information on the fiscal impacts of recovery. And there are a lot of needs, and there's going to be a long recovery process, and to me, it seems like we could make, we could start making better decisions and having those conversations. So that's why I made the motion. I think if we discuss eligibility, we could still accept applications, and we could have that part of the conversation this evening, and then we could consider targeting the most need, and also targeting nonprofits and those things at a study session, because I do think we could have a better conversation with that ten at night. And I frankly think we could do that, and we could still meet the March fifth, or March 31 allocation of the funding, so it wouldn't actually impact those businesses as long as we have the eligibility discussion this evening. And I appreciate all of the comments, I understand too, and like I said, I completely support the business community, so I understand that, I just wanted to make the best possible decision.
I'm looking at the chat box, I'm not seeing any others, so I will ask the city clerk to call for a roll call vote, and the motion is to authorize, no it's not, okay, could I get the alternate motion in? Thanks. The motion on the table that's been moved and seconded is to postpone AB 8128 Business Assistant Grants to the March 15, 2021 regular city council meeting. And city clerk, can you do a roll call vote?
Yes, thank you, starting with Councilmember DeMichele.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Nay.
Councilmember Hall?
Nay.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember Mart?
Nay.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Nay.
And Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
That is three in favor, four opposed.
Thank you, city clerk, three in favor, four opposed, the motion fails. We can consider, okay, I was going to say we can consider a different motion. Councilmember Goodman, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, thank you. I would move to authorize the allocation of $250,000 for business grants as presented, and direct the finance director to include $250,000 in a subsequent 2021 budget amendment from the general fund.
Deputy Councilmember Ray?
Second the motion.
There is some other comment in the chat here as well, so I'll allow Councilmember Goodman to speak to the motion, and then Council President Hunt, if you'd like to make a comment.
I think I spoke earlier about the same reasoning I have for not supporting the delay, the same reasoning I had for supporting this. Councilmember Ray also, not also, but not that I spoke eloquently, Councilmember Ray spoke very well to this previously, the prior motion. I just think we have an urgent need, I feel for the businesses, I really do, and it's, I realize we have other needs. This is the one that's before us tonight. I don't think we have to have everything before us in one work session after all the decisions that are made in Congress in order for us to make a decision. And I am happy to consider bringing the question of nonprofits back to us at an upcoming council meeting, but I think this is the issue before us, and I wholeheartedly support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Hunt, I noticed in the chat that you were also considering making a motion, but there is a motion on the table, would you like to speak to it?
I will actually be making an amendment, so I can make the amendment now, or if we would like to, if you'd like to entertain other comments on the main motion.
I would take the temperature of the body, I'm assuming that if there's going to be a proposed amendment, they might want to hear what it is.
Okay, thank you. I would move to include nonprofits in the eligibility criteria for the business fund grants if they meet the same criteria, including being brick and mortar and having employees.
Thank you. Looking in the chat for a second. Councilmember DeMichele?
I'll second that motion.
Councilmember, it's been moved and seconded, Council President Hunt, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, this is Council President Hunt. I think that we have heard from several of these nonprofits in the city that operate as businesses, they have the same sort of expenses as businesses, they have employees, they have potentially a brick and mortar business in Issaquah, and I think that they have the same sorts of needs as the businesses. So I would like to include them in this round of funding for the same reason we would be funding businesses. I think the real issue is just making sure that they do meet the same criteria, including being, having a brick and mortar building in Issaquah and having employees, because those are the groups that we're targeting with this round.
Thank you. And Councilmember Walsh has a question?
Thank you, this is Councilmember Walsh. My question is, are we, does this amendment include 501(c)(3)'s or just 501(c)(4) and (c)(6)'s?
I am open to discussion on this. I was considering including 501(c)(3)'s as long as they meet the criteria, because when I read the information provided by Jen, I didn't, it seemed to me that you could have a 501(c)(3) that also operates like a business that is in the city limits, that has brick and mortar and has employees, so I didn't see that differentiation. The only, the only reason I saw was that there are so many of them, but I imagine there are not very many of them that actually meet all of those criteria, so I was thinking of it being open to (c)(3)'s. I also, I think if we had more information, we could make a better decision on this, but that's what I was thinking.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, this is Councilmember Hall. I guess first I'll just say, I also think that we ought to consider supports for nonprofits too, I agree. My question is for the administration, though, because this particular agenda bill was written specifically with businesses in mind. Had you considered nonprofits, including 501(c)(4), (3) and (6), which you must have, because it came up at the council study session, it came up via email, would the amount have looked different than it does right now?
City Administrator Bobquist?
The dollar amount?
Yes, the dollar amount.
No, I think we felt that 250 was the right dollar amount, as we, as we talked about this more broadly, again, I think you've heard the explanation as to why it was not included in the administration's original recommendation.
Councilmember Hall, do you have, does that answer your question?
It does for now, let me stew on that for a minute.
Okay. Deputy Council President Ray?
I just don't know the answer to this, obviously. What's the tax stat, I mean, the tax implications of not-for-profits who operate here in town? I mean, do they pay property tax, do they pay BNO tax? I know that they get exemptions from things like federal property tax, but I don't know about the other tax bases, and then also, you know, do they generate any sales tax?
Deputy Council President, members of the council, I'm going to ask Jim Haney to answer much of this. You know, I did a quick Google search as we've been talking about this, of 501(c)(3)'s in Issaquah, and mostly what I got were churches. And so, you know, I think that there are churches that would pay certain, they certainly pay sales tax when they purchase things, but I'll ask Mr. Haney, who's more familiar with Washington state law than I am, as far as the issue with property tax, my guess is that they're all exempt from paying property tax. Is that correct, Mr. Haney?
First of all, let me say I'm not a tax lawyer. I always say I'm the best kind of tax lawyer, because all my clients are cities and none of them pay taxes, so. I do believe that some nonprofits are indeed exempt from property taxes, they would pay sales taxes on transactions as the purchaser, and they would pay sales tax on that. As far as BNO tax, I believe there is, at least in the city of Issaquah's and in the state business licensing regulations, there are some exemptions for nonprofits with respect to that as well. But I'm not sure I would differentiate between 501(c)(3)'s, (4)'s, and (6)'s, I'm not that sophisticated in terms of my tax knowledge at this point.
Deputy Council President Ray, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so, I'm glad.
Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. So I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that this is the first time we've considered bringing the nonprofits in for the business grants, is that right? The first time we've had a substantive conversation about it? Can somebody answer?
So it's not included in the bill before you, and there is not background information on the bill before you. I think the administration suggestion would be that it is a good thing for a study session to talk about and bring forward all the information based the questions you're hearing now. What taxes do they pay, what taxes don't they pay, what type of business is, may it be or not? And I think Councilmember DeMichele made some very good points about (c)(4)'s and (c)(6), you may actually be able to draw a nexus right towards the economic benefit in town, but we don't have any of that information for you this evening.
Yeah, and I, and I said before that I am absolutely open to considering it, and I would be happy to consider it very, very soon, but I don't, I'm not comfortable at 10:30 at night trying to guess at what the questions would be and what the answers would be. And so I don't think I support adding them in at this point, but it's for those reasons, it's because we haven't had a conversation about, and had an opportunity to ask and, ask questions and have our questions answered, and have them included in a presentation that has a lot of information in it, but that is the only reason. I know there's other information to consider too, about, you know, that we might want, may want to consider for criteria. Some of the nonprofits in town get rent-free or almost rent-free buildings from the city. You know, I don't know what questions we want, I mean, I honestly don't know what questions we want to ask, but I would like to consider it, I just don't think that this is the right time, but I'm happy to do it as soon as possible. So only for that reason would I vote no.
Thank you. Before I go back to Council President Hunt, I think we've gone almost all the way around the wheelhouse. Councilmember Mart, if you have a question, go ahead, otherwise I'm going to return to Council President Hunt.
No, no, thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll comment. It's always tough trying to parse something that's new, even if it's like seven o'clock versus 10 o'clock. I have too many questions about the nature of nonprofits to want to include nonprofits tonight. I don't know how much of the benefit of nonprofits, it goes local, if it's a nonprofit that's a funding agency, and they fund statewide or nationally on specific issues, that's one of those businesses that, you know, in the new economy, could potentially be located anywhere. And the locating of nonprofits, I just, there's just a bunch of questions that I have about nonprofits, and I don't think I understand that audience as well as I do the for-profit businesses that we have listed here, so I'm going to be a no, just because I don't know who this would be going to. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Mart. It looks like we have some council members that would like to go around again, so let's start with Council President Hunt, followed by Councilmember DeMichele.
Thank you, this is Council- Um, thank you, this is councilmember Hunt. I, uh, councilmember Goodman had asked a question about if this was the first time we'd had a substantive conversation on this, and I, I would say we, this is the first time we as a council have had a substantive conversation on all of the, all of the proposal. We didn't actually see it at the last meeting, we did see it in advance as opposed to this, but I think we also did ask questions and we received comments from the community about this nonprofit issue. So, yeah, I, I wanted to have more conversation on all of it, but now I'm putting forward this because I think it's something that we are, that we should consider with this package. We've had specific nonprofits explain to us that they have the same sort of expenses and they do serve people in the community the same way a business that's located in the community would. I guess I would also just say, I don't think we have anything, any requirements on the businesses, if they have a brick and mortar but they're serving people primarily outside of our community, I don't think that we're having any sort of requirement about that community benefit for the businesses that are getting the application, so I, I don't see that personally as an issue. I would have liked a lot more information about nonprofits, but I'm still going to make this motion, I think, tonight, because from what I understand, there are businesses that would meet these criteria, and I don't want them to be shut out of another round of this funding when we've already given 1.3 million and they've been shut out of the city funding up until this point.
Thank you, and councilmember De Michele?
Thanks, this is councilmember De Michele. I just wanted to speak to the 501(c)(4)'s and 501(c)(6)'s. We were sent a list of all of the ones that are in Issaquah, and so, you know, we're basically talking about the Chamber of Commerce and the Highlands Council, Council or the Association, anyway. Maybe not the Council. Uh, these are, speaking especially to the Chamber, there's definitely an economic engine in our city. If we didn't have Sammies Days, that brings in how many millions of dollars every year to all of the profits and nonprofits in the city of Issaquah. Same thing in the Highlands, they put on Highland Stays, they put on all kinds of ways of bringing in tourists and supporting businesses, and yet they're not eligible for these grants. And so, we have a very defined group of, of businesses that qualify for the 501(c)(4) and 501(c)(6). So we have questions, I'm hearing, about 501(c)(3)'s. I believe, I hope I'm not speaking incorrectly, that the Downtown Issaquah Association is a 501(c)(3). So the, these designations, some of them are very business oriented, and I would agree that others are not. I don't know, I, I'll, I'll offer a friendly amendment to the amendment, that maybe we just speak to the 501(c)(4)'s and 501(c)(6)'s in this amendment, and consider 501(c)(3)'s later.
So a second for the, does the motion maker agree, the amendment maker agree with the friendly amendment? Council President Hunt?
Can I ask you a question?
Uh, clerk, do we need to have a second before we go into questions?
Well, it's a question on whether I would support the friendly amendment. It's a question that would help me know if I would support the friendly.
Yeah, I just want to make sure in parliamentary process that we have a motion in a second before we have a question. So city clerk, what would be the appropriate process here?
Um, well, I, I don't want to over-parliament, but there is a question about a friendly amendment, so I'm not certain what councilmember Hunt's position is on that. However, you could proceed as a, as another amendment, which would require a second in order to be considered.
Okay. So, is there a second for, let's consider councilmember De Michele's amendment, an amendment, and is there a second for the amendment? If we have a second, we can discuss it. Council President Hunt?
I will second.
Okay, and I think based on Barb's explanation, oh, sorry, councilmember De Michele's explanation, before she made the friendly amendment, there's probably enough information, we can just go right to councilmember Hunt's, council president Hunt's question.
Um, can I do a point of order?
Sure.
Um, I don't think we can amend an amendment. Don't we have to take action on the amendment that's pending and then come up with another amendment?
We're going to go to our parliamentarian, deputy president, thanks for the question. Tina?
Hi, thank you, city clerk Eggers speaking. I believe that since you are defining what the, what nonprofit status is, that that would be your second amendment, but I will pose our city attorney if he has something different for us to consider.
My understanding is that there can be one, it can be one amendment of an amendment, but there cannot be more than one. So, as I understand it, there has been a motion to amend, the motion is to amend the amendment, that is in order, but there cannot be an additional motion at this point.
Got it. So, deputy council president, we're going to proceed with the amendment to the amendment, which has been moved and seconded, and council president Hunt, I was going to go to your commenter question.
Thank you. So I seconded for the conversation, so I could get an answer to my question, and my question is, I, I read the information that was provided about the difference between (c)(3) and (c)(6), but it seemed to me like, yes, it's a tax designation, but we could still have a smaller subset of those (c)(3)'s that meets the criteria, that have employees, that serve, that has a brick and mortar operation in Issaquah. So I guess I would like more information. My question is, what are the practical differences, and could we have businesses or nonprofits that are operating like businesses that are under the (c)(3) designation?
Is that a question for the administration?
Yes.
Is that, I'm not sure we would have an answer for you tonight on that.
Um, okay, I guess it's a question if, if the city attorney or if anyone in the city administration would have an answer.
Uh, Mr. Haney shaking his head no, and I'll see if city minister Bobquid will turn on his camera and let us know if he has any information on that.
Council President Hunt, members of the council, Ms. Davis Hayes was able to compile a list of (c)(3)'s from an IRS database as we've been talking. You know, we could go through that list and try to ferret out just based on the name of the, of the organization. I mean, that would be an exercise that would take a little time, but we could do it. I, I, I think, if I could be so bold, Madam Mayor, I think that the (c)(4), (c)(6) is a safer route to go, I think it's more straightforward, it's more in line with what the, the funding requirements from the Congress we've talked about earlier, that might be a little bit more straightforward. And if the council wanted us to come back at a future meeting and talk about (c)(3)'s, we could do a greater analysis at a future meeting.
So I'm hearing a couple of options here, and I'm just going to try and throw them out on the table and see where we want to go. It doesn't sound like we have the answer to council president Hunt's question this af, this afternoon, oh my God, tell me it's not this afternoon, this evening, but there is an amendment to the amendment that's been seconded and can be voted on, and the council has the option to vote on that amendment, which would include (c)(5)'s and (c)(6)'s. The council has the option to vote that down as well and proceed back to the original amendment, which adds nonprofits to the original motion from the administration. And I believe that's where we stand. Is everybody clear on what they will be voting on, on the amendment to the amendment? Uh, council president Hunt?
Thank you, I have a procedural question. So I, I believe that this was a friendly amendment, so I think the other option, and no?
Yeah, no.
We can't, we can't, I can't just amend, I can't just.
No, it's been seconded, and, um.
Yes, we have to vote on it.
Okay.
Councilmember Martz, before we go to the vote, it sounds like you might have a question.
I do have a question, Madam Mayor, this is councilmember Martz. You said (c)(5)'s and (c)(6)'s, did you mean (c)(4)'s and (c)(6)'s?
(c)(4)'s and (c)(6)'s.
(c)(4)'s and (c)(6)'s, all right, thank you.
Is there any other discussion or questions on the amendment to the amendment before I get the city clerk to do your roll call vote? All right, Tina, could you do a roll call vote for us? Oh, nope, sorry, hands are waving, I missed it. Uh, councilmember Goodman?
So the, thank you, councilmember Goodman here.
It does say, excuse me, but it does say quizzeton and not questions, so maybe that's why I was confused.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, you'll, you'll get paid back tomorrow. So, the information we had today, so that, so the, are we really, so we only have two (c)(4)'s and (c)(6)'s in the entire city?
Um, city minister Bobquid?
Yeah, this is part of the information that was, that came around today, that was not posted as part of our meeting. So, tell me what the (c)(4)'s and (c)(6)'s are.
Um, and I'll ask for Jen's help or Andrea's help to, I don't have the email in front of me. I think we've been talking about two of those organizations that we know are, have bricks and mortar and have employees, and that is the Highlands Council and the Greater Issaquah Chamber of Commerce. We do have the, the full list. Jen, I don't know if you have it in front of you or Andrea, I have, I do not, and I can try to pull it up, but that is not, that's not the complete list.
Yeah, yes, this is Jen Davis Hayes. So we, we have, again, this is from the IRS database, we have, there are 10, I'm sorry, there are 10 (c)(4)'s and two (c)(6)'s registered in Issaquah. And actually, we did not do an analysis if they have the Issaquah address, but they are outside of the city limits, et cetera, but that's, again, from a IRS database when we pull nonprofits and looked at those two categories. And there's 216 (c)(3)'s that are registered.
And Jen, do you have the, the actual list in front of you? Could you just run through quickly the (4)'s and (6)'s?
If I can get back to my mute, yes. So the 10 (c)(4)'s are the Evergreen Golden Retriever Club, Pacific Technology Alliance, the Highlands Council, Washington Continuing Care Residents Association, Air Vote Washington, Merrimont Community Association, Volunteers for Issaquah Schools, Issaquah Sportsman's Club, East King School Retirees Association Unit A16, and Kiwanis International. The (c)(2), I'm sorry, (c)(6)'s, there are two of those, Northwest Wireless Association and the Greater Issaquah Chamber of Commerce.
So I just, I'm going to make a comment here before we go to questions. Just a matter of process and procedure, I'm just going to throw this out on the table. There is definitely an interest, it seems, in some councilmembers or a majority of councilmembers getting more information, having some careful consideration of this. It is 10:44 at night, and we're reading off lists of names and trying to figure out who they are and where they are. I'm not sure if this is where I thought we were going to end up tonight or not, and so it would be helpful to me, if this is what council desires to do, to proceed with the consideration of the names that were just read and the amendments that we have, just give me a thumbs up and we'll keep going with this. But there may be another way to do this as well, with a work session and a vote in two weeks and whatever, so just give me a thumbs up that this is going the way you want, and we'll consider with the questions, continue with the questions and comments and get the clerk to do the vote.
Well, that was my question, and so then I have a comment. After, I guess I can have a comment after all the questions, thanks.
A question from councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, this is councilmember Walsh. Mayor Polly, I'm sorry, I did not grok, understand at 10:30 at night what you're suggesting. Are you suggesting that we bring this entire bill back in two weeks and have this fuller conversation about nonprofit status and the inclusion within? Or are you only suggesting that we break off the conversation on the nonprofit and still vote tonight on the business grant funding?
Thank you, sorry, that was not clear. Where I think it has wandered this evening is that as you're asking questions, staff is searching databases rapidly and trying to find you lists of things. It is really about the nonprofit conversation and how much information you would like to have, and what else you would like to know about the businesses and how it fits into the program and whether or not, if, if you're feeling comfortable having the staff search as we go, and that's providing you enough information tonight that you're ready to go, then we should continue with the vote on the amendment to the amendment, and the amendment, and the main motion. So I was not suggesting putting everything off, just the part where they're actually doing research tonight while they're sitting here and listening. Process question from deputy council president Ray.
Thanks, Mayor Polly, Chris Ray, I don't know that we can do that, we've got two, three motions kind of that are on the floor that need to be dispatched. I don't, I don't know how we could move forward without dispatching these motions, so let's rock on.
Okay, rocking on. Uh, councilmember Goodman with a comment?
Uh, thank you. I am, for the same reason as before, not going to support the amendment to the amendment, others, I just have the same comments, too many questions, I don't think it's appropriate that we're reading down the lists of the names of, my, my, my concern has nothing to do with the names of them, it has to do with the fact that we haven't had a conversation about it. Again, I'm willing to have it very, very soon after we gather some more information and have our questions answered, but it has nothing to do with who they are. Of course I know who they are, and of course I care about them, but I think we have to have a conversation and have our, I mean, I just don't think that this is a good, I don't think that this is a good way to make policy by just kind of trying to pull answers. But that's the only reason, I'm happy to direct the administration to come back super, super, super soon, thank you.
Looking for additional comments or questions, or we'll call for the vote on the amendment to the amendment? I'll give it a second. Okay. City clerk, can you read the amendment to the amendment?
Thank you. Uh, the amendment to the amendment is that nonprofits be defined as 501(c)(4)'s or 501(c)(6)'s.
Thank you, so it's been moved and seconded to modify the amendment with the language that the city clerk just read, and I'll get the city clerk to do a roll call vote.
Thank you. On this one, we'll be starting with councilmember.
Hang on a sec, I have a question. Councilmember Goodman, do you have a question?
Um, I was just confused about what we were going to vote on.
Okay, let's restate it, because I don't, I don't want, I don't want anybody to be confused. Um, there is a main motion on the table, there is a motion to amend that motion, and there is a second amendment to clarify the language in the amendment, and that was made by councilmember De Michele. And the clarification that councilmember De Michele added to the original amendment is that the only nonprofits that would be included in this round of funding would be the two that the city clerk mentioned, because I know if I guess I'll say it wrong. Uh, city clerk, is that a clarification of where we are and what this vote would mean?
Yes.
Just looking around to make sure everybody's eyes are like, yep.
So if the, the, the amendment to the amendment passes, what would that motion, what would the amendment say?
I would reread the amendment that was proposed by council president Hunt with the new amended language and have you vote on that. So an option is to vote to include that language, and that does not preclude you from voting yea or nay on the original amendment proposed by council president Hunt.
Right, it's just not, it's not in the chat box, I'm just looking for it.
Oh, sorry, Tina, could you put in the amendment, the second amendment?
And I think Tina asked me to type it in, so I'm going to.
And I think Tina asked me to type it in, so I'm going to type it in.
Oh, thank you.
And what I have, while we're waiting for that, is the amendment says to include nonprofits as eligible with same criteria.
Okay.
But I think Council President Hunt may have more specific wording.
For clarity, let's get the original amendment in, and then, City Clerk, could you enter the amendment to the amendment?
So if both of them were to pass, it would be to include C3s, C4s and C6s. Okay, I got it now.
Okay.
And, yeah, for all the reasons I said before, I'm just going to vote no, so.
Okay. So we'll be taking them one at a time, and one is just to clarify the language of the amendment. So the first vote is whether or not to add or clarify the amendment with the words nonprofits defined as 501(c)(4) or 501(c)(6). That is what you're voting on. You are not voting on the amendment itself. You are just voting on whether or not the language of the amendment should be changed.
Yep.
Clear?
Mm-hmm.
I see a lot of nodding heads. Okay. City Clerk, if you could do the roll call vote.
All right. We are going to start with Councilmember Goodman.
Nay.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember Mart?
Nay.
Deputy Counsel President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember De Michele?
Aye.
That is five in favor and two opposed.
Thank you. So the amendment to the amendment carries, and we're now going to go to the amendment. And Tina, I wonder if you could put that in the chat box for me with the amended wording? And Tina, I just want to clarify. Now that we are now voting on the amendment, do I or should I offer an opportunity to speak to the amended amendment to the council? I see a couple nods they'd like to.
It appears that they wish to have continued conversation. Thank you.
So they wish. So please put your name in the chat box, and I'll call on you for a comment or a question. Let's go to Deputy Counsel President Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. I think this, you know, the, looping back on this amendment as amended, every dollar that we would give to a 401(c)(4) or a 401(c)(6) is a dollar that not, we're not going to be giving to one of our, our businesses that have expressed a need. And what I find very interesting and ironic is we actually had a couple of our, not for profits, our 401, or 501(c)(6) today during public comment, talking about how they wanted us to move forward on this agenda bill. They didn't say move forward on this agenda bill and, you know, include us too. This is a question of where the greatest need is, and, and I, you know, looking at the list of 501(c)s that we just went through, I'm just not seeing that level of need. I just don't want to take a dollar away from our, our businesses that have definitely expressed significantly. Thanks.
Thank you, Deputy Counsel President Ray. Going to Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Councilmember Zach Hall. I was happy to support narrowing the scope of this amendment, but I'll be opposing this underlying amendment. There is absolutely no arguing that 501(c)(4) and (6) organizations need our support, but I would prefer that we pass this agenda bill as is, as it was proposed, and then revisit the issue very soon on supporting our 501(c)(4) and (6). Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Councilmember De Michele?
Thank you. This is Councilmember De Michele. Just a reminder that we're not, what we're doing is we're giving these organizations the ability to apply. They may not, if they do not meet the criteria that we've established, they won't be included in the lottery. If they're included in the lottery, they might not be chosen. All we're doing is opening it up for applications. We did receive an email that I recall from the Highlands Council asking us to consider 501(c)(4) and 501(c)(6). In conversations with representatives from the chamber, I know that they have lost a huge amount of revenue this past year, and of course, they had to mostly cancel seven days. I believe that the Highlands Council is in the same position. A lot of their revenue streams have stopped. They still have employees. They've all had to trim staff, just like every other business, and they support our business community. So I, I think that it's really appropriate for us to include them and give them the opportunity. That's all we're doing, is giving them the opportunity. It doesn't mean that they're guaranteed to receive anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michele. Council President Hunt?
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I was going to make a similar comment to Councilmember De Michele in response to Council Deputy President Ray, because we did receive information from, we did receive comments by email as well as in communication that, that there are nonprofits that specifically did request and explained their, their business expenses, just like any other business, including employees and, and operating a facility like a business would, and also that they serve local people. So I, I disagree that we haven't heard from them, and I also, I think that they have, in my opinion, made the case that they have the same sort of expenses, and they also provide the same sort of community benefit, and there aren't very many of them now that we've narrowed down the criteria even further than C4s and C6s, of which we don't even have that many to begin with. So I think, you know, that we already have built-in criteria into, that it has to be COVID-related expenses. They can't have received other funding to cover those expenses. So there's a bunch of, there's a bunch of criteria in there. I think that they have the same sort of expenses as businesses, so I will be supporting it, and that's why I put it forward. I also, I think we aren't making the best possible decisions, and I, I hope that we can, because we're authorizing funding, so we have to have this conversation now. I think we can have a discussion about future funding later, but while we're authorizing this funding, we have to, I think, fully discuss what, where the funding should go and how we can best target, and that's why we're having that discussion now, because council felt that we should expedite it. So I commiserate that I think it's hard to make these decisions at night, but at the same time, this is the funding that we're authorizing tonight. Thanks.
Thanks. Councilmember Walsh, followed by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. I was going to read from the email that we received from Kristy Gerard from the Highlands Council. She said, and we received that email on January 29th. She said, "Highlands Council is a 501(c)(4), and we pay taxes and licensing fees like other corporations. It's been extremely difficult to find relief, support for which a C4 would qualify." As she continues on, "We're a venue, but not a performance center. We're a gallery and art-making studio, but arts aren't our primary business." So I think it just demonstrates the need of these particular businesses as nonprofits. I would also reiterate what we have heard before, that they support our business community, they are businesses themselves, they have suffered needs. We have certainly seen they've had to let go staff in these organizations. And if we've already determined that it has to be somebody who has suffered a loss of revenue from COVID-19, that they have to have staff and they have to have a brick and mortar location. These are tax-paying organizations who, from my perspective, meet the criteria. So I'm going to be supporting this.
Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. I don't disagree that there is a need. It's a, but I think it needs to be, as I've already said, a different conversation. And we, this would add a few to a large pool, and if we bring something separate with a separate funding request, it's a much smaller pool, and I would say that the chances are even better that the nonprofits would get funding. So I actually think it's potentially better for them to be considered in a separate funding request. So I will be, I will not be supporting that, but I will, again, support bringing something forward super, super, super soon. Thanks.
Thank you. I am looking, there are a few folks that have not commented yet, so I will give the chat a minute to see if anyone additionally wants to comment before I get the city clerk to call for the vote on the amendment. Okay, seeing nothing further. The motion that's on the table is to, the amendment that's on the table is to amend the main motion to include nonprofits, nonprofits defined as 501(c)(4) or 501(c)(6) that are eligible with brick and mortar and employees criteria. City Clerk, do you want to call a roll call vote?
Thank you. We will be starting with Councilmember Hall.
Nay.
Thank you. Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember Mart?
Nay.
Deputy Counsel President Ray?
Nay.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember De Michele?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Nay.
That is three in favor, four opposed.
The amendment to the main motion does not carry, and City Clerk, I need your assistance. I can see the main motion up above, and I just want to make sure that we had a mover and a second, and I believe the mover was Councilmember Goodman, the second was Deputy Counsel President Ray?
Correct.
Okay. And that at this point in time, if there's anyone that would like to make a comment on the main motion, I'll allow a few seconds to see what shows up in the chat, and then I'll have the city clerk do a roll call vote. Okay, so, City Clerk, would you do a roll call vote? I guess I should read the motion. It's been a little bit. The motion is to authorize the allocation of $250,000 for business grants as presented and direct the Finance Director to include $250,000 in a subsequent 2021 budget amendment from the General Fund. City Clerk.
Thank you. We will start with Council President Hunt.
Aye.
Councilmember Mart?
Aye.
Deputy Counsel President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember De Michele?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
That is seven in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, City Clerk. That passes unanimously, and I see that Councilmember Goodman has entered in the chat that she'd like to make a motion.
Thank you. As indicated earlier, I am interested in, I'm interested in very, very soon getting some information, getting a information brought back to us, and I suppose, before I make a motion, I was hoping to get some feedback from the administration about how quickly they think it would be appropriate to bring back information and some options for the council for nonprofits that we could consider.
City Administrator Bob Quitz?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Goodman. I, I think if you're looking at 501(c)(4) and 501(c)(6), I think it's a pretty quick turnaround. If you're including 501(c)(3), it's going to take longer, because we're just going to have to sort through a lot of other issues. So, you know, we, we come back as early as your March 1st meeting, two weeks, to talk about C4, C6s, we probably would need a little additional, more time for, if you're including C3s. So let's say we could come back on the 15th, if you want to include C3s as well.
Okay, I would make a motion to the, direct the administration to come back to the council at our next, did you say next council meeting? That would be the first.
March 1st.
With information and options for the council to consider regarding business grants, I guess, for 501(c)(4) and 501(c)(6).
I'm looking in the chat to see if there is a second. Thank you. Expedient. Council President Mart has used the verbal, old-fashioned way of seconding. So we have a motion and a second, and I'm hoping the city clerk was able to capture the motion, but I think it's fairly clear. It is, okay, "Direct the administration to return at the next council meeting, March 1st, with information and options for the council to consider regarding business grants for 501(c)(4) and 501(c)(6)". Opening that up for comments or questions? So, sorry, motion maker, would you like to address your motions?
Thank you. I don't think I need to repeat anything that I said before. I think everybody's clear on why I made the motion, and I would only like the point of order that the council president is Council President Hunt and not Council President Mart.
Did I call him council president?
Yeah. See, I got you, I got you back. There you go.
11:07, same night. That's unfortunate. Yes, okay. I am still looking at the chat and not seeing any other comments or questions. Give it to, Council President Hunt, comment.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt, and I, I still have questions about the C3s. I know there are more of them, but I think they have the same sort of expenses potentially, and I don't really know enough about the differences than it was mentioned. Some of the ones that were mentioned earlier, I do recognize the names, and I know they have locations in Issaquah, they have employees, they have all the same things, as far as I know. So I, I think if we're bringing this back, my respectful request of council is if we are bringing this back about nonprofits, we have that information too. It sounded like we could have that on March 15th. I, I am hopeful that council can have a, a discussion about the whole nonprofit picture, and it seems like we could have that if we waited a little bit longer to give the administration a little bit more time to get that information to us.
So now, this is probably going to sound super painful, but you could make amendment to the motion to include 501(c)(3) and change the date to March 15th so that you could hear from your council, or I could ask the clerk, is there a way just to have those comments expressed now without going through the amendment to the motion again process?
Thank you. I guess my advice would be, if there is a change in the motion, and it sounds, then you reframe it and be seconded and voted on differently.
Negatively on the changes that were proposed by Council President Hunt, then we may be able to proceed with that, the amended motion. Thank you, Councilmember Mart. So I'm looking to see if anybody would speak against the revised motion language.
It's basically, is anybody objecting?
Does anybody object to the revision, to the, it sounds wrong when I say revision, to the motion language? And if you do object, please put your name in the chat, and I'll allow you to speak to it. Otherwise, I'll assume that we're going forward with the language that includes 501(c)(3). I'm not seeing anything. It has been moved and seconded to do, to direct the administration to return at the next, to return at the March 15th council meeting with information and options for the council to consider regarding business grants for 501(c)(4), 501(c)(3), and 501(c)(6). Any comments or questions? Not seeing any. I will ask the city clerk for a roll call vote.
Thank you for your patience. Why I script my next voting sheet. And let me move my screen here for just a moment. Thank you for your patience. All right. We'll be starting with Councilmember Mart.
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember DeMichelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Seven in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. So that carries unanimously. I did get some information from the deputy city administrator that we will not be having the executive session this evening after the meeting. We will be scheduling it next week. There, stop celebrating, we're not there yet. We still have an item under regular business. It is, also came out of the Isqwa Recovery Task Force, and it also has to do with providing opportunities for residents outdoors, but at 11, 12 at night, and after some more emergency funding-type conversations, I'd like to take the temperature of both the city administrator and the Parks Director and the council of, do we want to go through this item tonight? It does not seem to have the same level of urgency, so tell us guys thumbs up. Okay, lots of thumbs up, we're going with it. Okay, so I will introduce the last item under the regular business tonight, which is AB-8129, Fit and Fun Outside Funding. The request this evening is to authorize the funding, and I'd like to invite Parks and Community Services Director Jeff Watling to present this item. Jeff?
Mayor Pauli, thank you so much, given the late hour council. Thank you. I'm going to, I'm going to strive for brevity. Within the staff report, you see, as the mayor identified, this is a request to authorize allocation of $40,000 for the Fit and Fun Outdoor initiatives that came directly from the mayor's Recovery Task Force. As the staff report lays out, we presented these five ideas at the January 26 study session. You gave us some really good feedback at that discussion. Based upon that feedback, what we initially saw as a cost estimate for these five projects of $75,000, we've modified that. What you have before you tonight is a funding request for $40,000 to accomplish those five tasks. The Recovery Task Force certainly recognized, much like you did, there are a lot of priorities and very high priorities for pandemic recovery and response, though this is not of the highest priority. It's certainly a, seen as a community priority of finding ways to initiate, encourage, advocate for family fun activities, safe and fun activities out in our Isqwa public spaces. So these five items that are before you tonight for this funding include providing some outdoor fitness equipment. We do not have a final identified location, but we are focusing on the Rainier Trail area and downtown Isqwa. We feel like it is most accessible to a mixed-income community, as well as our mixed, multi-generational community. Somewhere along that popular trail, we'll be working with a group of sports medicine professionals as well as others, as Jennifer Fink leads that effort. As you'll see in the request, a majority of this $40,000 request would be for that, that project. So with that, I will see if there's any questions or feedback on this request. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Watling. In my chat box to see if there's anything else. And I do just want to add a clarification to Councilmember Mart. I'm assuming that the motion you were originally planning on making was an amendment and is no longer applicable? Okay, sorry about that. So the motion has been placed in the chat box, and I'm also waiting to see if there are any questions for the director before we proceed. I'm not seeing any right now. Council President Hunt, would you care to make a motion?
Thank you. I move to authorize the allocation of $40,000 for the implementation of the Fit and Fun Outside Initiative, as recommended by the Recovery Task Force, and direct the Finance Director to include $40,000 in a subsequent 2021 budget amendment from the General Fund.
And Councilmember Goodman?
I'll second that.
So it's been moved and seconded, and let's go to discussion. Is there any council discussion? Great. Let's start with, oh gosh, it's moving too quickly. Councilmember Hall, followed by Deputy Council President Ray.
Thanks, Mayor Pauli. This is Councilmember Hall. I'll be real brief. I just wanted to thank Director Watling. I thought that this was a good response to our conversation at the study session, and I appreciate you taking our comments to heart and coming back with a refined proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Deputy Council President Ray?
I think this is a great idea, but one I'm not particularly supportive of or willing to fund at this time. I think, given the discussion we just had and our priority of needs, this doesn't elevate to the same level as some of the things that we've been discussing, and I appreciate the work that went into it, and I appreciate the need that's been expressed. I just think we have greater needs, and we have finite dollars, and we haven't found the bottom yet, and so I just cannot get behind supporting this initiative.
Thank you, Deputy Council President Ray. Council President Hunt, followed by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. I, I think one interesting thing about this request is that the amount that is being requested is so small that I believe the administration could fund this without the authorization of council. So it's not a very large amount of money, and it was requested by the Recovery Task Force. I think that it's before council because we did have a discussion about a larger amount of money previously, and it was also discussed in the context of a larger recovery fund. But I think I, my comment is mostly that it's a very small amount of funding, and it was recommended, and it's equipment that I think, for the most part, the largest amount of this money is equipment that will be installed in parks and will be a lasting asset in those parks. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman, followed by Councilmember Mart.
Thanks, Councilmember Goodman here. So I am supportive. Thank you to our Parks Director for working on this. I would also appreciate keeping an eye out for what is going to happen within the pandemic because we're not out of this, and as people, as we're not out of this, people are looking for safe things to do outside, and so I actually feel like there are probably some, would, might be, depending on what happens, opportunities to make more investments in, in the outdoor area for our residents who are itching to do things but have been sort of largely caged. So I, I do very much support this, and if there are, is there, if there's a need and an opportunity to do more a little bit later this year, then I would be interested in entertaining that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Councilmember Mart?
Thank you, Meta Mayor. This is Councilmember Mart. Yeah, I do see this as COVID-related. I think that I've seen, in the people that I know and the people in the community, a real correlation between the ability to get out of the house and the ability to weather this a little bit more, it's a little bit easier to weather if you can get out of the house on a regular basis, and so this very modest amount of money, I'm, I'm amazed if, I know what it costs to put an even modest play structure in a park, so I'm amazed that $40,000 will do very much, but if, but I trust Director Watling, so I'm going to support this bill this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mart. Councilmember DeMichelle?
Thank you. This is Councilmember DeMichelle. I support this request. However, I had a question for Director Watling. I was surprised that the funding for the Concerts on the Green was taken out, so I was just wondering if we could have an update on what's the planning there, because I would sure like to have those in August, if we could, and so is there just, could you give us just a little bit of an update on what the thinking is about getting those going?
Absolutely, yeah. The request from the study session was for additional concert funding. So we have our already budgeted concert funding that you've already approved in the '21 budget. We've already reached out to our concert partners just last week to begin planning. What we recognized is we, we've got these next three months to really determine what concerts are going to look like, what, what level we're going to be at in terms of phased recovery, what size crowds we can have, and so let's allow us to do that work, that planning work with our partners, and then we'll have a much better picture in three months as to, if we'll need additional funding. But the show goes on, is the plan. We're just planning to do it with additional, additional budgeted funds. Cats allowed if they're on leash.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichelle. I do not see any other comments or questions, so I will ask the city clerk if she can do a roll call vote. I'll read the motion again. Nope, I'm seeing waving. Deputy Council President Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. I just have one final thought for y'all to chew on. I think the council president's comment that this was not a significant amount of money is right on. I think that her comment that this is an expense that can be absorbed is right on, and so it's one I don't think we need to take action on. And I just want to tell you that, you know, if we took that $40,000 and we put it into grants, we could give every 401(c)(4) and (6) in the city $5,000. So it's a matter of where you want to spend your money, and, and I don't think it's going to be the draw that's going to be making people, I'm going to go out and go down and use the exercise equipment. I, I just don't think that's the thing that's going to make people get outside. I think it's going to be, the sun's going to come out, and that'll make people get outside. So I just don't see the bang for our buck, and I just, I really believe we have so many other higher priorities that we spent hours talking about tonight.
Thank you, Deputy Council President Ray. So the motion on the table, unless there's anyone else who'd like to make a comment, is to authorize the allocation of $40,000 for the implementation of the Fit and Fun Outside Initiative, as recommended by the Recovery Task Force, and to direct the Finance Director to include $40,000 in a subsequent 2021 budget amendment from the General Fund. And, City Clerk?
Thank you. We will be starting with Deputy Council President Ray.
Nay.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember DeMichelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
And Councilmember Mart?
Aye.
Thank you. That is six in favor, one opposed.
Thank you, City Clerk. That motion passes, six to one, and that moves us to the Good of the Order, and do any council members have anything for the Good of the Order? Make sure I can see everybody's face.
Can I make an amendment to a motion?
Yeah, that's not really a Good of the Order item, so we're just going to rule you out of order. I've got one item for Good of the Order, and then I'm going to move into upcoming council meetings, and I guess the Good of the Order item is that it's pretty loud and clear from the really amazing conversations that you have had this evening, that we have some work to do for March 15th, and that we will have some more information by March 15th, hopefully good information about what the feds are doing, and that you had a very thoughtful and engaging conversation tonight. It's 11:30, but I think, I think it went really well, so thank you for that. The next council study session is Tuesday, February 23rd, and the potential agenda items include the Police Accountability, Equity, and Human Services Action Plan Update, while, and the second item that is potentially being included is the Wildfire Strategy. The City Council Regular Meeting of March 1st has the following potential agenda items: Regional Coalition for Housing, Administrative Budget and Work Program, and Trust Fund Recommendations, and a second item, the 2021 Arts Grant Recommendations. The last item on our agenda this evening was to be an executive session, but we are going to be moving that to a separate meeting next week, and so therefore, if I can get my notes where I need them, that means that there is no further business, and we are adjourned at 11:27 PM. Thank you all.